We're rating on Brian.[46.12][46.12](APPLAUSE). Good morning, I'd like to call this board meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll.
Supervisor Foy. Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Lawn.
Here.
Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here. And Todd Collard, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need a motion for the minutes of June 17th promptly filed by the clerk. It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote on that item. And the minutes passed, we're at agenda review.
Thank you Chair Bennett, a few items here. Item 10, county executive office, approval of the acceptance of the transfer of the Piru Town Square Depot from the former redevelopment agency of the County of Ventura. A revised board letter and exhibit six have been submitted. Item 20, healthcare agency, approval of contract with Perez Family Funeral Home, we request to continue that item.
I'm sorry, the first item?
Item 10.
10.
A revised board letter. Yeah, continue, yeah. Item 35, Supervisors Bennett and Supervisor Zaragosa, direct county stat to prepare a single-use carryout bag ordinance, a comment letter from Anthony Van Lewen has been submitted. Item 63, CEO's office, approval of responses from the Board of Supervisors and CEO to grand jury final report, Ventura County Campaign Finance Ordinance, exhibit one has been submitted. Item 64, CEO's office, public hearing regarding the adoption of the amendment to the 2014-17 agreement with the Deputy Sheriff's Association, a letter of advice from the Civil Services Commission has been submitted. Item 65, CEO's office, public hearing regarding adoption of the amendment to the 2013-16 MOA with SEIU, a letter of advice from the Civil Service Commission has been submitted. Item 66, CEO's office, approval of the year-end budget and other adjustments for fiscal year 2013-14, a revised board letter has been submitted. In addition, we request to hear item 61, Supervisors Zaragosa, approval of one-time payment of $38,000 to the Oxnard Boys and Girls Club. And 66 together, that's 61 and 66 together, with item 66 to be heard first.
Okay. After 66, alright.
And then item, on the addendum agenda, item 71, Supervisor Foy and Supervisor Parks, recommendation to send a letter of support from the Rancho Simi Recreation and Park District's application for environmental enhancement and mitigation grant. Item 72, healthcare agency, approval to sign Cerner System Schedule Number 10 in the amount of $19,160,000 to provide remote hosting services, revised board letter and exhibits one and three have been submitted. Item 73, healthcare agency approval to sign Cerner System Schedule Number 12 to provide additional reports, a revised board letter and exhibit one have been submitted. And finally, item 74, healthcare agency approval to increase the purchase order contract with Steve Clark and Associates from $100,000 to $150,000 for cost reports and OSHPOD consulting services. All documents have been submitted and posted on the web. And that's it. That's right, right, that's longer than the agenda.
Great, alrighty, thank you very much. Board members, anything else for the agenda review? Alright.
I would ask that we pull item 10 for discussion, questions?
Alright, okay. We're ready for a motion for the agenda as modified. We have a motion and a second for the agenda as modified, we're ready to approve the agenda for the day. Agenda has been approved. Now it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Ron Bale, he's the Director of Behavioral Sciences of Ventura County Medical Center Family Medicine Residency Program, and really delighted to have you here for a moment of inspiration, I think you have some great inspirational comments for us.
Yeah, thank you, first of all, it's a real privilege to be able to do this, and Chair Bennett, Mr. Powers, board, I just thank you for allowing me this opportunity. What I want to talk about is the classic quote win-win situation. So just a little bit of background, I teach, I'm a psychologist and I've been involved with the Family Medicine Residency since 1984, in fact, our, many of our current interns were born after I started there, but, so I have some longevity on my side and I'm the...
It's happening to all of us.
I gather that. So I've been doing that for about 30 years, and it's just a wonderful privilege to be able to participate in the training of family medicine residents. About three or four years ago, I was invited by Dr. Mindy Papalo, who's the Director of their California Lutheran University Psychology Doctoral Program, which started, I think, five years ago, they're going to be graduating their first class, it's a five-year doctoral program, they'll be graduating their first class in the end of the year. I've been a clinical supervisor there, in their clinic, at their Oxnard campus, but the students there as part of the program do clinical rotations or practica. And so last fall, we had three of the CLU fourth-year doctoral students come over to VCMC for their practicum training. And it was, we really didn't know how it was going to turn out, but it turned out to be phenomenal. They rotated through the Academic Family Medicine Center, the Women's Clinic, the Immunology Clinic, the Oncology Clinic, and the Palliative Care Team. So they got tremendous experience. The real win-win for me is that, and I looked at the tally, so they're probably a little understated, but over the eight months they were there, we had 761 patient contacts. And the reason, and then they were there about a total of 1,300 hours, because they have to turn in their hours, these are what was documented, I suspect it was more than that. But the 761 patient contacts tapped into a patient pool that never would have been seen otherwise. Why do I say that? We have a great behavioral health department, but their mission, their target population is the chronic severe mentally ill, okay? Most of the patients who come to our county clinics wouldn't meet criteria because they're too high functioning, they're able to come and do an outpatient medical clinic. However, most of the patients who come to our county clinics also don't have the resources to get their psychological psychiatric care in the community, because it's, you know, the private sector, they don't have insurance, they don't have access, and certainly they don't have the funds to pay cash. So these are, we said, it's been a problem since I've been working in the residency, we have these people, let's just say something like, you know, they had a fetal demise, or something bad happened in their life, well, they're not going to meet criteria to go to the behavioral health department, because they're not psychotic, they don't have the resources to go in the community. For the longest time, I would do the best I could to see them, my time there is limited. The residents do the best they can, but they often are overwhelmed, both learning and taking care of a lot of patients. So these graduate students, who are fourth-year students, so they could pretty much fly solo, were providing tremendous care. And the patient, I mean, I literally have seen it change lives, it changed the lives of these graduate students, I think if we play our cards right, maybe a few years down the road, they may be coming back to us. It's been a great opportunity, so I just wanted to pass that along, it's the ultimate win-win.
And will it continue?
Oh yes, actually now, the CLU students, the class that will be starting their fourth year, they've been competing over who gets to come, and we'll be able to take three of them. And there are, technically, they're supposed to start by the end of August, but I think if I work them a little, I can get them to come a little sooner. And it's interesting, because the residents, the faculty, like, where are your students? We need them, and the patients too, so it's just a really neat opportunity.
The Tom Sawyer help, help us whitewash the fence, you get an opportunity here, right?
Absolutely, well, yeah. And then Dr. Papalo over at Cal Lutheran is also very much supporting this and has designs on how we can expand.
You know, as you talk about our services, the question we don't know is how many of those 700 people would decompensate and become chronically, you know, and so the whole, one of the, one of the ideas out there with mental health services is to try to do prevention and to catch people early in a crisis is certainly one of the great things out there and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Wow, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you again for having me.
Good piece of news, thanks for your good work over there too, Dr.
Thank you.
Joan, thank you for letting us know about Dr. Bale here. Alright, Mr. Powers?
I was gonna say to Dr. Bale, just thank you, we talk a lot about integration of medical and mental health services, he's been doing it for 30 years, and it's just a real treasure, so just thank you for your leadership, your work, and just did some quick math, so that's about 400 physicians he's trained in our practice. Sorry, Ron.[691.44][691.44](LAUGHTER). Yeah, fine, go take a, go take a nap, thank you, thank you very much.
Alright, great. Well, we've had some great moments of inspiration here, just remind us of things that are going on that are really great. Let's, let's take consent item 10 for the discussion Supervisor Parks wants to have before we go into our consent calendar, do we have any comment cards for our consent calendar? Alright, thank you. Supervisor Parks?
Hi, this item is part of the effort to dispose of redevelopment agency property, and it would transfer the town center, or Town Square Depot in Piru to the General Service Agency Parks Department. And I know that was kind of in the vision all along, but we have a building there that's not being used, and the transfer comes with it the cost of maintenance, and the cost of maintenance is substantial, and so I would like to see that the Parks Department take a look at this, with the approval of this item, it doesn't come with that, in my position, does come with the authority to start spending $54,000 or $56,000 a year in maintenance, but to actually look at ways to reduce those maintenance costs. With Santa Rosa Park, I think we got it down to $17,000 to $20,000 instead of $56,000 for this one, and that had to do with, we got a park host there. But maybe if you had community gardens where you can sell plots, or you change the grass out to drought tolerant, so you're not mowing it, but just looking, looking at things or being able to lease out the building and continue to work towards that, because this to me is going to put a crimp in our park budget, I don't know if the Park Department wants to talk about that, but I just wanted to see that we're going to look at ways to not have it be $56,323 a year in maintenance for this. And I know I went and visited a lot of it, just taking care of the grounds and the maintenance, and maybe we can hire someone from the Piru area, get them a job, and have them be part of that effort, but I would like to see some alternatives to just paying that amount of money and not having a building that's being used.
I just want to be clear on the, are you asking for a change in this item, or is those comments in addition to the approval of this item, or you want to hold this item, or you want to approve this item with that modification?
This, I think, as I understand it, is just that transfer of the property and accepting that.
Right.
But in the, in the description, it's talking about how much it's going to now cost our Parks Department, and when we are looking at ways to cut costs, this is just going to be, in the scale of things, a lot more than we had anticipated.
Supervisor Lawn?
Yes, I would not want to pull this, I think we need to act on it, I think that the successor agency held lots of discussions that the Piru Neighborhood Council members were engaged with, and, and it is a project that was built with a vision for the community that has been stalled for a variety of reasons, but there still is great interest in the community that has become quite a community center. But of course, we knew that the 2015 was the sunset of the RDA, long before the state took the action on RDAs. And I fully agree that the expense to our, our Parks Department is another piece of straw that will be a challenge, and so I certainly am speaking with the supervisor, the community, I think would, they've talked about a community garden, and they, and they certainly would like to have an occupant in the depot that would bring revenue in to offset cost of maintenance for it. So I don't disagree with any of that direction to staff to work, and certainly work with my office, work with the Neighborhood Council, certainly we'll work together to see what we can do to offset the cost. Because it's, you know, we don't want, one, the property become a nuisance, and, and, and not value what investment's already been put in that property, so we'll just, we'll be aware of, we want to lower the cost.
Mr. Van Dyke?
For the record, Ron Van Dyke, General Services. We have been managing that property basically now since about November, when we brought the skate park on, which is tied directly to that property, it's continuous with that property, and so is the trail that also starts at that central location of the town center. We have not done a full year's worth analysis and a full year's time of staff timing on, with my staff operating and maintaining the grounds, we hope to get that number down significantly through better management of time, scheduling of mowing, water, watering, we revamped the whole irrigation system out there, so try to get the water under control, we're looking at our electrical loads and getting better timers for our electrical circuits for night lighting and security lighting, so they're not coming on when they're not supposed to. So we're really trying to trim all of those different items that would drive this cost. This is not all being saddled by our O&M fund for regional parks, so this is not really a hard hit on the Parks Department. So we're going to do our best to get those costs down, we're working to try to figure out who to put in there, into the building. We tossed some ideas around yesterday, everything from daycare to possibly sheriffs using that as a storefront, which give visibility in the downtown area a little bit better than where they're at off in the backside of the town. So we're looking at some ideas, and again, we're still relatively new at taking this over, so we really don't have all the solid answers in how to, all the trimming of the cost to reduce some of the costs.
And the, if I might, the board, there was a piece of the RDA that was sold through auction, and the bank building in downtown Piru, and the owner's looking to, you know, start possibly a pizza operation or something, so, and, and we're starting to see some property movement in Piru that will generate, I think, more interest in having a retail commercial possibility in the town square, but I'll certainly will work with you on the ideas that the community will come forward with.
Yeah, it's a small footprint, that's part of the problem.
Right.
The footprint inside that building to do retail is relatively small.
It is.
And it would, tried to tie into the train years back, there was a small boutique in there to support the train and the tourists, and that folded because it just couldn't make enough money to keep it operating.
And neither could the train.
And now no train, so.
So we'll...
Ron, let me, go ahead.
I just, I appreciate that the supervisor took a look at this because of our overall interest in our parks operation, so.
Yeah, and I agree, I mean, she makes some really good points, because you've struggled to try to find the revenues to do all this, but you're pretty comfortable that it's not going to have a major blow that's going to deter other things you need to do.
Yeah, we all get it balanced out with Health CEO's Office, we've got a plan to, to move this and reduce costs, and I think we're taking some significant bites at the initial cost estimates, and we can only do that using industry models, how long it takes to mow an acre of lawn, and, and our history of water usage out there and electrical usage, that's what we had to do at the roll-up to see what it would cost for the part of the transfer, but we've been reducing our costs every which way we can, by, you know, we'll schedule mowing every other week and do some things that, and reduce our watering by changing out heads and timers and everything else, so we're trimming every way we can.
I mean, it's, it's your budget, and if you, if you, I mean, she makes some good points, but if you feel comfortable, then I have no problem with it too, so we can try to make it work, so.
Just see that we get it down below that $56,000, you know, if we can do it for half of that at Santa Rosa Park, which is a lot, large area, and then also consider, you know, the grass isn't like playfield, so the idea of taking out turf is just a good idea in general, and putting in drought tolerant landscape is always a good idea, or a rose garden, you know, if you have a rose society, I mean, there's so many opportunities there, and I was thinking the community garden, but it would be nice to get some use out of what we've got there, and not just put water on it and mow it all the time.
Well, just to let you know, our Santa Rosa costs aren't $15,000, our Santa Rosa costs are closer to about $30,000 to $35,000.
Well, and here you're looking at $56,000, and I know one of the things we did, it started off at this high number, and we put a park host there to reduce costs, so just asking for some creativity to reduce the cost here.
Report back.
Yeah, report back, I think that'd be good.
Great.
Certainly work with my office.
Yeah, absolutely, and you brought up some really great possibilities too, so it'd be nice to get that used, I don't think it's been used for years.
Alright, we're ready for the consent, motion on the consent calendar overall?
We do a motion just on 10 and then do the consent.
Alrighty.
For the comments, okay.
Shows us just how nimble that machine is, you can pull out a consent item even. Yes, sir. Alright, that item passes, we now need a motion for the consent calendar, go ahead. And board members, board members and members of the public, our next item is public comments, but it's just, there we go. So the consent calendar's been approved unanimously, we have public consent coming up next, but we do have two of our emergency room doctors who we'd like to not have out of the emergency room any longer than we have to.
On a rapid here.
If you're, yeah, if you're somebody that's going to the emergency room, you'd appreciate this, they're here for item 56, so board members, I'd like to jump to item 56 real quick so we can get our docs back into the emergency room.
Thank you Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Fisher, Healthcare Agency, I'm very pleased to bring this contract forward for Seaside Emergency Associates. As you know, Dr. Dossett formerly ran the Santa Paula Hospital Emergency Department, Seaside stepped in in May and has just done a phenomenal job. So what we've done is combined the contract for both Ventura County Medical Center and Santa Paula Hospital. The doctors have jumped right in, it's amazing how quick they've integrated into the Santa Clara Valley, talking with the physicians there and encouraging the use of our hospital up there on the hill. With this contract, we will increase rapid care services at Ventura County Medical Center. Supervisor Bennett has talked in the past about wait times in the emergency department, so we will enhance this 10 hours per day during the week, which will eliminate that backlog, as you see some other systems that have, you know, text ER to this number, that's what the docs want to get to, to where we can just have the less serious patients essentially come into our rapid care area, get treated quickly, and sent on their way. So with that, I'm open for any questions you may have.
Okay, board members, any questions on 56? Mr. Powers, any comment?
We have our Doctors Robinson and Rutherford here, maybe one of them make a comment, or if you want to. Sure, please.
My name's Jeff Robinson, I'm one of the ER physicians, and we're just really excited about the opportunity to work in Santa Paula. We have a lot of experienced physicians, and we have seven of, seven physicians who are core to the group, five of which have been with the healthcare agency and in the emergency department for 25 to 30 years, two of us have been there over 30 years, and we're really excited to bring that experience to Santa Paula. And I think we can bring an economy of scale also to the departments by combining them in terms of just efficient use of the attending staff and consultants, and also, I think, just overall, just use of the resources that we have at both hospitals. So that's our hope, and again, we're just really excited for the opportunity.
Well, thank you very much, I think we have been real pleased with our relationship with, with your group, and happy to have it expand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and a second, we're ready for a vote, item 56.
And for the docs, we're just, we're so lucky to have the quality of ER physicians in the group that we have, it really is outstanding, and one of the things where it's really helped too is with our trauma system, that's a huge change for any hospital, and they are on the front lines of it, and they really make it go, so just thank you for your leadership and great work.
Okay, alright, now we're at our public comment portion of the, of the agenda, it'll be item eight. Alright, we have, we have four public speakers, and our first public speaker is Inez Tuttle. Hey, oh, we have eight public speakers, well, Inez Tuttle, so we're going to go to four minutes per speaker, please, alright, four minutes.
Good morning, my name is Inez Tuttle, and I really hadn't planned to come and speak until yesterday about 5 o'clock, but my concern is the Ventura County Law Library, which is actually a jewel in this county. It serves approximately 843,000 county residents, and we have a bar association that boasts a number, member number of over 1,200. And in saying that, our library has operated at a loss for many, many years, I'm not sure of how many years, but while operating at a loss, the board has saw fit, the, the board of the law library has saw fit to pay retirement, sick pay, vacation time, and health benefits to the employees, and this has all been at the expense of hours of operation and books for the law library. It appears that we have an apathetic population who is going to let this, this program just fold. What they're doing now is thinking that attrition will solve the problem, it has not. The library plans to operate the next year with three full-time employees, which is not enough, one part-time employee. These employees together, I believe, have less than six years of experience at the law library. We had one employee who served three positions, she was the librarian, the director, the, the elected secretary of the board. I believe none of this information has gotten out to the general public. I have felt while being at the law library that it was really very, very closed to the public as far as comments, there has been no attempt to raise funds, they did not have a rent to the library, they did not have a donation box, they have not asked people to remember them in their wills or in their trusts. As Supervisor Parks said, we need some creative planning going on at that library, it's dying and nobody cares. Thank you.
Ms. Tuttle, thank you for taking advantage of public comments to put something on our radar screen for us, appreciate that. Mr. Todd Collard?
Members of the board...
Members of the board, staff, I'm Todd Collard, I'm president of the Ventura County Arts Council. Several months ago, we were before you with the county's first poet laureate, and you expressed an interest in the poem, we said we'd get right back to you, well, that's where things go, the poet laureate left town, we didn't get copies and her signature on it in time, so I've brought those back to you today, you have those framed, and we're pleased to present those to you. For members of the public, we do have the first poet laureate, Mary Kay Rumel, and she's in service for two years, and is doing a great job so far. While I'm up here, I thought I'd comment on some of the win-win relationships the Arts Council has with you, much as Dr. Bale alluded to. We're in a great win-win situation with the board, because you've allowed us, the Arts Council, to since program space throughout the atrium galleries, we call it, you call it the Hall of Administration, we have three floors, which have been interrupted by a phone call of art, and currently, we have a very unique show on the fourth floor, where many of you have your offices, it's the first, we believe, digital art show in the county, it's a collection of art, it's conceived and created on computers or iPads and the like, and if you go around and look at that, you'll see that this art is no longer kind of science fiction-y, kind of crystal-like work, we've got work now that looks like oil paintings, so just to express how far that medium has come, and hopefully people will get more educated and perhaps interested in that. We have an upcoming show in mid-July, which will be titled "Art Saves Lives," very high-minded title, and literally true, been working with artists for a past year, one of which is the daughter of one of our county employees, and their stories, along with their art, will be on display in the fourth floor, some are very disturbing, tragic, unnerving situations, others very uplifting, but they tell the story of how art has really, literally saved their lives, several of them, and certainly made them more whole people in addition. Lastly, I wanted to just bring your attention, through GSA, we've been able to use the entryway, hallway to the building, it's a space that's somehow, sometimes programmed with departmental information kiosks in the manner, when it's vacant, GSA said, "Well, why don't you try using it?" So the first piece we have up there is an installation piece by a cameo artist, B.J. Fan, and it's called "Roosting Birds," and what he's done is depict an event that occurs in LA around dusk, when all these blackbirds decide to roost down this chimney. Mr. Fan has created an origami chimney, which you'll see, placed on the floor, and then assembled, I think, about 200 birds by hand, pinning them to the carpeted wall in a kind of a flying formation as they dive into the tunnel, into the chimney, so we'll, you'll see some interesting pieces up there, we've got several groups lined up, and we welcome ideas for the programming of that space, so thank you all very much, and enjoy the poetry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Collard, I do want to mention one thing, talking with some people in Oslo, Norway, about how their view is, all of their public buildings have to reflect character, and have to be something that their citizens can take pride in, and, you know, this government center was built, nice building, but it didn't have that artistic flavor to it that it certainly has now, and, I mean, you're making this a real place for people to stop regularly and see what's up on the walls, it's a dramatic contribution that the Arts Council's really making, so if you pass our appreciation on to everybody, we really appreciate it.
The architects left us with a lot of blank walls, which is good for displaying artwork, so.
Thank you very much. All right, okay, our next public speaker is Sue Williamson. Good morning, Ms. Williamson.
Good morning, Sue Williamson from Ojai, I think I'm supposed to be able to push a button here, could you put the PowerPoint up for us? Basically, I'm here to talk about the effects of using sprays on our-
Excuse me, I want to make sure he hears you.
Okay.
Could we restart the clock for the speaker also? Could we, could we please have the PowerPoint up to the speaker requested, Sue Williamson?
Okay.
All right, one more time on the clock, please, thank you.
Okay. So, basically, what I'm here to talk about are the health issues concerning the spraying on our county, on the trails, et cetera. I've been informed that your biologist has misinformed you greatly about the use of glyphosate. There is a long list of studies, I guess if I push this button, something's supposed to happen here, oh, there we go, a long list of studies linking glyphosate to cancer, autism, Crohn's disease, colitis, allergies, Alzheimer's, autoimmune disease, asthma, last but not least, birth defects, infertility, and sterility. We can email you, these are just, there's, there's so much on the internet, and so many studies that have been shown, all these various links to these diseases. The active ingredient in Monsanto's Roundup herbicide is possibly the most, I'm just going to zip through that because it's too long, "The most important factor in the development of multiple chronic diseases and conditions that have become prevalent in westernized societies," and this is according to Dr. Stephanie Senef, research scientist at MIT. She has revealed how glyphosate wrecks human health. Monsanto, and your county biologist, has steadfastly claimed that Roundup is harmless to animals and humans because the mechanism of action it uses, which allows it to kill weeds, is called the shikimate pathway, and they say it's absent in all animals. That is true, that it is absent in all animals, except that, the shikimate pathway is present in bacteria, and that's the key to understanding how it causes such widespread systemic harm to both humans and animals. Let's see here, I think we missed one, did we miss one? Bacteria in your body outnumber the cells in your body 10 to 1. For every cell in your body, you have 10 microbes of various kinds, and all of them have the shikimate pathway, so they will all respond negatively to the presence of glyphosate. Glyphosate causes extreme disruption of the microbes' function and lifestyle, cycle. What's worth, glyphosate preferentially affects beneficial bacteria, allowing highly toxic pathogens to overgrow and take over, so you can see how all this list of things that have been referenced here, particularly things like Crohn's disease and colitis, and the autoimmune disease, and there's more information coming from Patty about specifically how it affects us, but I think it's really upsetting that your biologist is taking the position of Monsanto, and this stuff is being sprayed all over our county.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Go on with this here.
All right, our next speaker, let's keep the PowerPoint up, our next speaker is Patty Pagely.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing us about this really important issue, I know that you've heard us speak about glyphosate before, but this is really important information, it's just come out, Dr. Senef and Dr. Huber, who's a plant pathologist, who is very knowledgeable, they're speaking about the importance of really stopping the use of glyphosate entirely in our ecosystems, for our health, for the health of the soil, which actually is important for our food system, because when you have dead soil, you don't have healthy food, and the people are not going to be healthy either. Okay, so, just carrying on about glyphosate, it is actually a patented antibiotic that destroys gut bacteria. It's an acknowledged endocrine disruptor, it breaks down the blood-brain barrier, allowing toxins into the brain, it's actually a patented chelator, that was originally patented as a chelator, it holds or makes unavailable the vital nutrients of any living being, this is really important stuff. So Moms Across America, a group that is nationwide, has come out very strongly with moms who went to the EPA and spoke to them, and it doesn't mean that the EPA is going to rule right now, saying, "Okay, we're going to stop," because there's so much money and so much politics that's involved in all of this, but this is a huge statement, when you have mothers coming out saying, "We need to stop the use of glyphosate," this is, this is something that Ventura County can lead the way in, to say, "Okay, let's really look at this seriously, we have to stop this." And I'm going to let Alicia continue on with her story, she's witnessed some of the spraying, and I'm going to leave this.
Hi, my name is Alicia Tharp, I live in Ojai, and I also own a business, which is directly across the street from the bike trail. On April 1st, I was thoroughly appalled when I walked outside to see the mini tractor going down the trail with his sprayer. It was 30 miles an hour wind gust that day, and it was predicted all over the weather, forecasted it was going to be very windy, so the spray was just like not hitting ground, it was going everywhere. Also, rain was predicted for the next day, meaning it was just going to get washed away, wasted money down the drain. Also, another disturbing factor was that there was no signs up warning pedestrians and bikers, like they're required to have signs up. I noticed, oh, yes, I noticed that the, that they were spraying where there was just dirt and gravel, there was no weeds. It's just disturbing, because I live in Ojai, where we are so dry, that there's no weeds growing from May to October, there's no point in spraying, I mean, bottom line, the spraying's no good, but why do it when it's just being wasted, there's your dollars going down the drain? So that day, I called Parks and Recreation, and I kind of got, I don't have the name of the person I spoke to, but I kind of kept getting dodged around the issue, and I kept getting told that it's a scheduling thing, we're working on the scheduling issue, I go, "Well, bottom line, he's there now spraying, and it's worthless, it's going everywhere and exposing people needlessly." So she was able to get him to stop. About two weeks later, I saw the tractor going down the trail again, the spray is blue, which makes it even more toxic than the herbicide already is. I'm assuming that they made it blue, so they, he could see, if it was windy, it's not blowing everywhere, so he can actually see where it's going, and it seemed to be working. However, it allowed me to see how far off the trail it was going, into people I know live just over the fence, there's mobile homes right there. Also, that same day, there was a man next to, right here, look how close he is, he was right 20 feet away from the sprayer, the man in the tractor was all covered up in a suit and a face mask and everything, this man had nothing on, right there spraying on the ground, as, they're both spraying at the same time. That day, there was huge orange signs on the trail, but just after I saw this, there's bicycles going by, so the signs, either people didn't care, they weren't affected, or the public is not aware how damaging this ingredient is that we're spraying. And then, like, the next day, no, actually, it was six days later, the ground still has this bluish tinge, there's a toddler, a mother, and a child standing there messing through the stroller, I mean, stuff's on the ground, right there. I grew up in Michigan, where weeds grow a mile high in a week, we drove, they'd go down the road with the tractor, it had a thing sticking out, it would go over the rocks and over the hill and cut the weeds, they'd do it every few months, it worked fine. I already mentioned the fact that right over the, right over the fence on the bike trail, there's, I know people that have organic gardens, they have children, they have pets. The internet's full of very viable, I don't know if there's any more pictures here, a little closer shot of the man with no coverage, the internet's full of very viable alternatives, the main one they're talking about is vinegar, salt, and dish soap. There's many counties in California that have banned or stopped using glyphates, Marin is a particular example, also Humboldt County, they've completely stopped their herbicide spraying on roadsides. Jefferson County and San Juan County in Washington are also the same way, and they are having definite successful outcomes using these alternative herbicides. I just think that our, our bike trail's a very special thing to have, it runs from Ohio all the way to Ventura, and it's very highly used, and I think it's something that should be taken care of and kept healthy, and, and so.
And thank you, your four minutes is up.
With that, I didn't have a clock in front of me, so, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Our next speaker, Kathy Bennett. Great last name, Ms. Bennett.
That's exactly what I was going to talk about, in names. My name is Kathy Bennett, I retired from Villanova Preparatory School in Ojai, and whenever I go out in the world, people say, "Ah, are you related to Steve Bennett?" And it's all in a name, and I wanted to talk today about the names that are, we think of Roundup as being this glyphosate, but there's a zillion other names now that they've substituted since 2003, when the patent ran out for Monsanto, so we have these names like Aquamaster, Touchdown, Mirage, Cornerstone, Eraser, Ranger Pro, Pronto, Imitator Plus, Zamzow's Cleanup, Lypro, and I want to recommend that we stop using chemicals and poisons on these trails. I mean, I graduated from high school in 1965, and I was out there with Rachel Carson, and I spent my whole life studying the environmental impacts of throwing poisons and toxics into our environment, and we're still doing it, it's 50 years later, what's this about? Is it easy, is it simple? It's no cheaper than buying other alternatives, so I want to recommend that we, first of all, substitute. Secondly, I want to talk about the trail, because it's really a, whoops, eminent domain, it was, actually, it came about the same time, in 1969, there was a torrential rain pour, which we wish we'd had today, and it wiped out a bridge, and the railroad said, "Not doing this anymore," and they gave it to the county, they banned it, and the county took it on. Right now, it's called, it's got the Ventura River, it goes all the way to the Ojai Valley, and it's 15 miles, and to think that we're spraying poisons that take two years to wash out of the soil on this trail, that is, one of, it's amazing to me, when I went on the internet, it was one of the most valuable areas in the county, especially, I think they called it the number one of 16 attractions in Ventura. I think we all use it all the time, for biking, jogging, I would have never imagined that we were spraying poisons on it, I mean, that's just a shocking thing, so Rachel Carson, myself are saying, "Stop." And there's another substance called Knockdown, which is also a very non-toxic ingredient, so that's what I want you to do, so I want you to stop spraying, and we'll keep our names, and we'll keep not using that stuff.
Thank you for your testimony, and I'm sorry for any embarrassment, my name has caused you-
Oh, I was always honored by that, the name.
Our next speaker, Ron Whitehorse Hurst. Good morning, Mr. Whitehorse.
Good morning, my name's Ron Whitehurst, and I'm a pest control advisor, I talk daily with farmers about pesticides, how to use them, and how to get off of them. I've actually attended a couple of meetings of the county IPM Committee Council, and given a presentation at one of them. I'm co-owner, with my wife, of Rincon Vitova Insectries, the oldest commercial or free enterprise insectary on the planet, near as we can figure, and I'd like to talk to you about trailside and roadside maintenance, that currently- That currently, a lot of Roundup is used, and Roundup is not safe. Besides being an herbicide, it's a chelating agent and an antibiotic. Roundup is 10 to 100 times more toxic than glyphosate, the active ingredient in Roundup, depending upon which species you're looking at and the route of entry. I'm calling our supervisor to place moratorium on Roundup in the county based on longstanding studies that have been either attacked or dismissed and on new studies that show even more concern for its toxicity. When Roundup is used as an herbicide for trail or roadside management, it has the following negative effects. It chelates essential minerals that plants and animals need for healthy metabolism. That is one of the ways it works to kill plants. It binds to soil particles and then travels with wind and water. So its influence is not localized as one would imagine, you know, just spraying it onto the ground. The result is to make plants and animals sick. It acts as an antibiotic, killing the beneficial soil fungi that give soils its good tilt, its structure. This makes the soil hard and compacted so that it only grows weeds that are the primary colonizers, the ones that are tough and aggressive and hard to kill. Roundup leads to having to use more Roundup, creating a pesticide treadmill. It gets on the bees that collect pollen, nectar, or resin from the trailside plants. Roundup kills the beneficial bacteria in the gut of the bees, damaging the bee's immune system and leaving it open to mites and disease. Along with the unique pesticide, it contributes to colony collapse disorder, the die-off of our bee colonies. Roundup gets on the feet of dogs, dogs walking the trail who lick their feet to clean them. How many have lost a dog to cancer lately? Roundup also kills insects, water plants, and tiny wildlife in our streams and rivers. There's less food and more toxic food for the fish, which then the birds eat and don't reproduce as well. We are losing our frogs and salamanders because the runoff that goes into the creeks and streams mutates tadpoles, developing into frogs and salamanders. Roundup is not glyphosate. You cannot go out and buy a jug of glyphosate. It's always mixed with adjuvants that make it more toxic, more potent, and more destructive to the environment. Monsanto says it's safe. However, Monsanto has been cited five times by countries around the world for misrepresenting their products. Roundup does not break down in the soil like Monsanto would have you believe. Roundup is based...is used on farm fields and orchards and gets into the food. The USDA had to arbitrarily raise the allowed level of Roundup in food or restrict a lot of food, you know, from human consumption. Roundup is connected with leaky gut syndrome and immune problems. Now Roundup is showing up in mother's milk. Do you want your child, a grandchild, to drink male milk laced with Roundup? Mother's milk is what we hold as the ultimate standard of purity. Now, this primal nurturing food has Roundup in it.
Mr. Whitehurst, your four minutes is up. Can you finish up, please?
Right. So what can we do? We can stop using Roundup. The Seating County of San Francisco and LA Unified School District stopped a decade ago the Binaural Resource Center study roadside vegetation management without herbicides 25 years ago. Dr. Lynn Ingram of Soil Food Web demonstrates weed control with soil biology. The information is available. I encourage you to look at this situation and to focus on the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker is Josh Gilbert.
Hi. My name is Joseph Gilbert. I live in Ojai. With all the evidence that I come across about Roundup in Monsanto, it really makes me wonder why there's any question anymore in the minds of educated, informed people about these issues. You know, I'm not going to any great lengths to get my information. I pick it up at a broad spectrum of paying attention to the media, and, you know, I assume this information is available to everybody else. So it raises a question, like, why is there such a lag between what we know and how we act, you know, in terms of our policies as governments and things like that? What is it that makes it different for the Board of Supervisors than it is for my group from Ojai? We're not more educated, we're not more informed than you all are, you know? So what is it? Does it have to do with Monsanto? Does it have to do with economics? There's a point where what appears to be economically advisable turns out to be inadvisable as far as the health of your children and your own health go. At that point, you have to say, what's more important, making a few more dollars or preserving my life and the quality of my children's life? And you have to make the right choice at these times. There's no way you're going to be happier with, you know, plundering the earth. We have to make a living by doing things that are actually helpful to us rather than things that destroy our environment and ourselves. So do the right thing because that's your job. We depend on you. We hire you to take care of things in our county that need to be taken care of. And so act in good faith to the situation as it really exists. Just because you're higher up here on this podium than we are, don't forget who is supposed to be the governors of this democracy and do what's right for all of us, not just for the ones that happen to have deep pockets at this particular time in history. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert, and I'm sorry for mispronouncing your first name there. It's Joseph. But that's all of the public speakers we have for this morning. And so, board members, I know this is a public speaking time, and so this isn't a time that County Council would allow us to have any extended conversation, but I do want to offer these comments. Number one, in a democracy, you know, it's a fundamental question. How are decisions made in a democracy about something like the bike trail? And it was pointed out how precious of a resource the bike trail is. This board has entrusted our Parks Department with the responsibility of the bike trail, and our Parks Department has consistently taken the position as pointed out by the speakers that this is the appropriate treatment, that they've examined the studies, et cetera. When you have a group of people that are taking advantage of the democratic process appropriately, and I think these comments have been, you know, very soberly presented, very appropriately and professionally presented, consistently brought up, I want to emphasize, I take it serious every time I've been contacted about this issue. And I know that Ms. Pageling recently contacted me about the recent studies that are out there. In starting the process of examining those, I found out that the Environmental Protection Agency is supposed to, within the next couple of months, issue their analysis of those new studies. And no one would be happier than me if we could come up with some definitive agreement by, you know, a preponderance of the scientists on this issue, but we do have conflicts with regard to that. But I think, as I think about the April 1 incident that was pointed out, you know, if, to the extent that the county takes a position, the County Parks Department takes a position that we continue to need to use glyphosate on the trail, then we have a special responsibility to strictly follow all of the guidelines. And I just want to emphasize, I know we have representatives of our Parks Department here, we damaged our credibility tremendously with that April incident where we had an applicator not following our procedures. And, you know, when we investigated it, we found out that the applicator actually was cutting corners and didn't follow the procedure. Sometimes you can do damage that you can't recover from, and I have to say that was a...we have a tough situation. We have a very important resource. Bicycleists who use that a lot need it to be a safe trail. It's difficult to have a safe trail if you have weeds that produce all kinds of things that get deposited on the trail for bicycling. So we have this trade-off. What...how do we handle the issue of the weeds? And how do we handle, you know, for the safety of the bicyclists? And yet, how do we protect the public health of the citizens who use the trail? And, you know, is glyphosate a problem? Is Roundup a problem out there? Certainly, you know, to the extent that the jury stays out, the burden of safe application really falls on us. So I just want to say to the speakers, ever since I got the notification from Patty about two weeks ago, I guess, or so, you know, I'm particularly on the Ojai Bike Trail where we have this trade-off, trying to keep it safe. I'm rededicating myself to push to try to find solutions. We have a group of citizens that are coming together that are saying they will take care of the manual removal of the weeds. And if they do that, then the Parks Department will no longer spray. Now, that's...I'll just tell you upfront, what the real challenge with that is. Other places where that's happened, there's oftentimes significant enthusiasm at first for the removal of the weeds, and then it falls apart. Well, that's part of what people rely on government for, is to kind of keep those efforts going. But to the extent that people are willing to do that so that it's not sprayed, that is a tremendous contribution of some people to say, we'll go and we'll take care of the trail. So I'm very interested in supporting that effort, trying to make sure that that effort goes forward. If we can find a way to keep that trail safe for bicyclists and other people that use it, and at the same time assure people that we're not spraying it and not doing something unnecessary, that would be a true win-win for the Ojai Valley. This is easily the most valuable public recreation resource that we have in the Ojai Valley. And our Parks Department recognizes that. They knocked themselves out to build that great bridge on the Ojai Bike Trail that most of us have seen. So this is not an issue of, and unfortunately from the last speaker, this is not an issue of Monsanto has gotten into the pockets of the Parks Department or to the Board of Supervisors by any means. There's not a conspiracy here. There is a legitimate disagreement amongst professionals of all kinds of stature. A gentleman here who speaks about this certainly has good professional credentials also. Our biologist has good professional credentials, but not suspect motives, just public figures caught in the middle of trying to do that. But, you know, we've had, you know, again, the missed application went a long ways for me to say, something's got to change, you know, because you could have missed applications again in another year and, you know, as this gets off the radar screen. So I'm going to rededicate myself to by next fall, trying to see what we can come up with before we get into the next growing season for the weeds because things should be pretty minimal, fortunately because of our lack of rain, but unfortunately because of our lack of rain also. So I want to get that all set. I know we can't have a long conversation about it, but you're...I can have a long conversation, but you can't have a long conversation. That's right. But you are availing yourself of the democratic process appropriately. You are keeping this very much forefront on the radar screen of the Parks Department and of this Board of Supervisors and of myself, and I congratulate you for doing that. And I'm just very hopeful that we can come up with some solution, and I'm really looking forward to seeing what the EPA study comes out with. Just another piece, I mean, it would be, if they could be viewed a little bit more, if they came out and agreed with the MIT scientists that came forward, that would be significant, in my mind, in terms of where EPA went. So, sorry for the long comments, but...
And I'd just say also that you're not alone. We have another group out in Oak Park that have been studying. They have landscaping out there, and they're looking at trying to reduce the chemicals that they're using there. If the studies show that, you know, or prove conclusively that it isn't healthy for the environment, then you're going to be looking at alternatives and things from, you know, ground cover to cover so you don't have the weeds growing. But it's always good to be able to look at those alternatives regardless of whether, you know, the EPA comes out or not. So I look forward to seeing what we can do out there, and it gets used a lot, like you said, so it is really important that we have a healthy position there.
So thank you for your comments. Take, we're moving faster. Could you just contact...we have some...we're way behind in terms of our agenda, but I'd be happy to talk with you more if you want to contact my office. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much for your testimony. Supervisor Zaragoza has asked us, board members, if we could, our next item, and hold our board comments, go to item 61. He has some speakers here specifically for item 61, and so if nobody has any objection, we'll jump to item 61. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have to connect that with 66, I think, before?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. We have to hear 66 before. Okay. So Supervisor Zaragoza wants us to hear 66 and 61. Thank you very much. Mr. Dursey, you ready? Boy, you jumped from the end of the line to the front of the line here.
Right. I appreciate that.
Nice to have an inside connection.
I helped you there, Paul.
I was ready. I appreciate that. Yeah, this is our year-end budget adjustment board letter, item number 66. For the record, Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. Nothing significant. I think the most significant thing is that our current year budget, 2013-14, remains well-balanced and going into the final couple of weeks of this fiscal year. One, a couple items I would like to bring your attention is item number two, and that's the, just to transfer the $750 one-time payment to all the general fund-supported departments. That's really the main emphasis of this particular board item. The remaining items are relatively routine. And then the other item is item number three, where it's contribution to the Boys and Girls Club of Oxford. And that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? We're ready for a motion on item 66.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded.
And just a comment on Supervisor Zaragoza's item two, just how nice to be able to help so many kids and some 70 children for that.
Thank you. And can I then go into...
Yeah, well, this item passes, then you want to do 61? Is that right?
Yes.
All right. I just need to...yeah, that item passed unanimously, and now we're ready for item 61. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Thank you to Mr. Chair and board members. You know, this item is extremely important. We're asking for at one time $38,000 to help the Oxford Boys and Girls Club continue funding the summer program at Nyland Acres. And as you remember, Nyland Acres, in the last five years, when I first took over, there was nothing out there for the children. They were playing on the street. And in fact, in Nyland Acres, there's really no park. There's absolutely nothing for the children to play at or have to play. And there's, in fact, one of the kids got shot and killed out there in the neighborhood. As a result of that, we opened up the Nyland, working with the El Rio School District. And since that time, we have really not had any additional violence there because now they have a place of their own and so forth. What happened just recently, apparently the school district applied for what they call a Century 21 grant of a million dollars, and they didn't get it. They only got what they call the ACE program for another million dollars, and now they're spreading those dollars over eight schools. And consequently, as a result of that, now Nyland Acres, apparently according to the school superintendent, they're looking at closing Nyland, which is really catastrophic because there's nothing absolutely there for the children to call their own or their own center, community center. So we're asking for those $38,000 to continue that program, to continue to help the families. And last night, we had a MAC meeting, and we had over, with Mike Barber, our chair there, we had over 100-plus residents and children testifying on how important that center is to the community. And one of the things that we are working with the Boys and Girls Club, and one of the things that was brought to my attention, there was a study made over Cal Lutheran that states that for every dollar that we spent, we save $17 in juvenile justice and whatever kind of programs that can help this individual keep out of being incarcerated, keep out of drugs and any type of wrongdoing. So I think that this $38,000 is going to be well-spent, you know, to keep that Nyland center open. And as I mentioned last night, we had lots of testimony, and I think it's going to be beneficial to us. The other problem that we have, Mr. Chair and supervisors, is how are we going to continue this program in the future? And that's one of the things that we're going to be working with the school district on that. And the superintendent says that he's going to convey that message to the El Rio School Board, and then also our residents there in El Rio are going to go and testify before the El Rio School Board to try to continue to get additional funds. Because we are talking some 2,000 people that live in Nyland... Because we are talking some 2,000 people that live in Nyland, and I can guarantee that probably half of those are children. But I'm just asking the board to please, you know, help us out and approve this item.
All right. Thank you very much, Supervisor Zaragoza. I know we have one speaker, Mr. Barber. We have four speakers? Five minutes.
Okay, good morning. My name is Mike Barber. I'm a resident out in Nyland Acres. And we kind of jokingly refer to Nyland as Nyland Island. And the reason we say that is, we have, on one side, we have Santa Clara, which is like a freeway. We have a big drainage ditch on two other sides, and we have an actual freeway on the fourth side. So we're kind of landlocked in there, and it's very difficult for kids, and most parents don't want their kids leaving, because it's so dangerous trying to cross these busy Santa Clara. So to follow up what John said, we had a meeting last night, and it was just overwhelming of how many parents and kids were there. And the question, the kids came up to me and said, "Now what are we going to do? We have no place to go. We have no place to play. We have no activities." To follow up also, what John had to say was, there was a lot of violence, there was a murder out there of a teenager, there were some drive-by shootings, there was a lot of gang activity. Since the Boys and Girls Club has been there, it's gone away. These kids are learning how to be good citizens, to respect each other, and to do good in school, be friendly. It's just amazingly wonderful program. I would hate to see it go away, and I'm really asking you, begging you, to finance this, so we can give us a little bit of time to figure out how we're going to make this program go forward. Thank you.
Thank you for taking your time to testify this morning, Mr. Barber. But more importantly, I know Supervisor Zaragoza really appreciates what you're doing out there in Nyland Acres, and those children do too. This board has a long history of trying to support Boys and Girls Club, doing these kinds of programs, has been very much supportive of our public safety, and I certainly be...
Do we have any other speakers?
...enthusiastically enjoying it. No, I have no other speakers on this item. Are there any other speakers on this item? Oh, all right, well...
Dina was a good translator last night. She's excellent, and by the way, I'm not sure if I can share that, but she's one of our county employees, but she's very, very good, and helps us out tremendously in translation last night.
Could you state your name for the record?
Good morning, my name is Dina Urreñón Tiberas, and I live over in Nyland Acres. I chose to live there. I actually did a little bit of study before choosing to live there. It is one of the lowest socio-economic neighborhoods in the county. It's not part of the city, it's county. And I thought, by moving there, maybe it can make a difference, since I do work for the county. I'm a social worker with the Area Agency on Aging. In addition to that, now I'm the president of the Nyland Acres Mutual Water Company. And I was very disheartened to find out that the El Rio School District wanted to surplus the property, and they're in the process of doing so. They sold the property out on Vineyard for their buses, and they were thinking of moving the buses to Nyland Acres. Well, this little school annex is no longer a school, it is a community center now. But if there are no programs there, if there is no Boys and Girls Club, if they surplus it out, then that gives them the justification to sell it. And so I'm afraid that the long-term consequences of not having any programs there would be to have no place for our children, and not just our children, but our elders and our adults. This is the place where people go to walk, this is the place that people go to gather, there are parks at times. Mr. Barber contributed a huge amount to our park there by rehabbing the grass that was filled with gophers and had them killed. We're providing water. Of course, the district has to pay for it, and they really need to lower the amount of water. But this is a place where the kids gather, and they're able to have some education, community service. The teenagers come in to help with the smaller, younger kids, and there are people who speak Mixteco who meet there, people who speak Spanish that don't speak English. A lot of this community is made up of farmworkers, and they don't have a large amount of income, they don't have the means to travel outside of the community. So this is a gathering place for our community members. I really appreciate the fact that Mr. Zaragoza hunted down $38,000 for the summer, but I do hope that in the future, we can create some kind of plan to have these children come together, and to have a place for the community. I don't know how we can start doing that, but we really cannot see that place leave, and it become apartments, or a bus barn, or something to that effect, because the traffic there is terrible. And these kids really need a place to go. If you were to drive in our neighborhood at about 8:30, 7:30 in the morning, you would see at least 200 kids walking around trying to get to the bus stops. These families have five, six, seven, eight kids. There are a lot of children in our neighborhood. So this amount of money is going to be extremely helpful, and very well-spent, and I thank you so very much for approving this. Again, thank you, and I hope you have a wonderful day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Mr. Chair, additionally, I'd like to share that we've had churches help us out, we had Am Jam help us out, we had United Way help us out, we had Food Share help us out, we've had a multitude of agencies that have helped, you know, the community center. So that's a magnet there for that, for that community. There's absolutely no other parks, zero. So the kids are going to be playing on the street. And we talk about crime, it's going to be crime again. Like Mike says, we have not had any problems in five years when I took over that building, and worked with the school district, and the Boys and Girls Club. Tim Blalock has done an excellent job there for, and working with Mike and the community too, so.
Great. Well, certainly fits our criteria in terms of it's outside of the city, it's in the unincorporated area, these are the kids that we have. And investing in our youth has been something we've always viewed as a great investment. So we have, are you ready for a motion on that item?
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote on the $38,000 allocation. And thank you both for taking the time to testify.
Thank you.
All right. We have a 9:30 time-certain item, Board members, so we're going to hold our board comments, and get into our 9:30 time-certain item. We have 9:30, and then we have quite a bit at 10 o'clock. I believe we have four speakers for our 9:30 item. I'm going to try to move promptly there, because we have all these young people coming in for the 10 o'clock. Are these with you, Mr. Barber?
These are the kids from Nyland Acres.
These are the Nyland Acres kids, excellent, good. The, so 9:30, our 9:30 item is the introduction of plastic bag ban ordinance that Supervisor Zaragoza and I serve on Beacon. Beacon is the organization of coastal communities from Santa Barbara, Galita, County of Santa Barbara, City of Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, Ventura, Oxnard, and the County of Ventura, come together to talk about issues that relate to us and protecting the coast as we move forward. And Beacon took on the responsibility of trying to create a regional EIR, so that we could have a regional approach to a plastic bag ban. There are many benefits of working together collaboratively on this. For a while, the courts were ruling that every entity was going to have to do a separate EIR for a plastic bag ban. That didn't make a lot of sense, and the courts ruled they would accept a regional EIR. Through Beacon, we were able to fund and handle that regional EIR that was completed. Now, again, trying to move forward, all of the various agencies need to step forward. Do recognize there is a bill moving forward through the state legislature, but we're not certain whether that bill's going to move or not. If the bill gets stalled again, we've waited patiently, I think, for a long time. We have a number of speakers, I think, that will speak to the value of this plastic bag ban, but I'm glad to see that Mr. Davidson did not have to show up today in his plastic bag outfit. But he has a, the Sierra Club has an outfit of just the amount, number of plastic bags, you know, all collected during recycling campaigns. But if you go down to the beach at the River Mouse, Santa Clara and Ventura River, the number of plastic bags that you'll remove from there will gall you, and you become a believer, at one time, you participate in one of those cleanups, you become a believer in terms of how bad the plastic bag ban situation is. There's some great benefits to having this done on a larger scale, rather than on an individual, trying to time everybody up in terms of individual. But what we want to do is at least have this initial vote, and see if there's board support for directing the CEO to work with staff, and to work with county council, and to come up with an appropriate ordinance for us to vote on, when that's all put together for us. So those are my comments. Let Supervisor Zaragoza talk, and then we'll turn it over to our four speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, and just to share with the public and the board, you know, that Beacon is made up, it's a JPA, Joint Powers Agreement between the County of Ventura and County of Santa Barbara. And we have cities like Port Winnebago, Oxnard, Ventura, Carpinteria, Santa Barbara, Galita, all those are members of the JPA. And there was an ordinance passed by Beacon, Beach Erosion and Nourishment, Beacon, an ordinance, you know, to ban plastic bags. We found out through studies too, that only 5% of individuals actually recycle plastic bags. And consequently, as a result of that, many plastic bags are out in the environment that clog up storm drains, and also pollute our waterways and beaches, and so forth. That's why Beacon got together as a JPA to pass this model ordinance that all the cities can use, and consequently help us to reduce the plastic bag pollution. And of course, you know, one of the things that I'd like to mention at the end is that this type of ordinance is also supported by the California Grocers Association, which represents over 300-plus retailers throughout the state of California. And as the chairman mentioned, you know, the state of California is also working on an ordinance for, to ban the plastic bags.
All right. So, any questions before we start? Supervisor Parks?
I appreciate you bringing it forward, and realize that while the unincorporated county only has, what did you say, 21?
21.
Stores that it would apply to, and I would like to see that list sometime. It doesn't have the same kind of impact if the cities have it, but I guess, just like we did the spay neuter ordinance and the law against puppy mills, we can only do it in the unincorporated county, but we encourage the cities to follow suit. And I think I saw Mr. Davidson at Councilmember Brennan's retirement from the Ventura City Council, all dressed up in his plastic bag suit, but that was, it does make a statement, certainly. The question that I have on this is, the ability to use the funds that the stores would otherwise get for children's education. I mean, right now, stores hand out those bags for free, and now if this comes forward and we adopt it, they will receive money for the bags that they were handing out for free. So it seems to me, if we can use those funds for children's education, I was thinking, our county has a fishing game commission, we used to be able to give grants out, and put in, school gardens was one of the things they were doing. But I would just like our staff to also look at the ability to use the money, instead of going to the stores, going to children's environmental education, perhaps through the fishing game commission.
Thank you very much. We have four speakers, if there's no other comments or questions. Anthony Van Lewen. On deck, Mr. Bob Davidson. Good morning, Ms. Van Lewen.
Good morning. My name is Anthony Van Lewen. I'm here to oppose this particular agenda item. There are several reasons that I want to give you. The first reason is that by passing a bag ban and this ordinance, you're going to increase the cost to county residents in the unincorporated areas by about $2.3 million per year. In my letter that I sent to the clerk of the board this week, and I have two enclosures that document specifically how we arrive at that figure. The second reason is that survey data from the city of San Jose, and from the city of Santa Monica, show that shoppers overwhelmingly reject using reusable bags, and instead use paper bags or no bags. In fact, in San Jose, 43.5% of shoppers left a store with no bags, putting their groceries in their cart, or carrying them out, holding them in their, clutching them in their arms. Some people say it's a picture of success. I say it's a picture of failure, the failure to come up with the right solution. The other issue I like to bring up, and that is water consumption. Reusable bags, in order to use them safely, require water to wash and sanitize them. The EIR that Beacon did estimates about 123 gallons of water per person, per year, to wash those bags, and sanitize them. The real question is, why would you use water, a precious resource, a resource that we have been asked to conserve and cut back upon, to wash, and sanitize a reusable bag, when a plastic or paper bag is available off the shelf that is sanitary? That's a question. Public officials are telling us that we have to cut water consumption by 20%. They love to tell us to conserve water, and that every drop counts. You see, it's not an issue of whether we have enough water in the system, or available to wash reusable bags, or that the fact that we're talking about a relatively small amount of water. The issue is, does every drop really count? Now, some of you, in talking to your constituents, may have given that same message. The question is, does every drop count? Your vote today on this matter will tell us whether water conservation is a more, is a high, has higher preference as an environmental goal, or whether cleaning up a few plastic bags as litter. Since I have a couple of additional minutes, in my letter, I did in paragraph three, propose an alternative solution that would ban thin-film plastic bags, and replace them with thicker plastic bags. These bags will not become airborne, they will not go down the drains and flow out into the rivers, and does not impose a fee on paper bags, or these thicker plastic bags in the store. It resolves, it solves a lot of problems. If you read paragraph three of my letter, you will see that particular solution. And I do not believe that it would require a new EIR to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Van Lewen. Our next speaker is Bob Davidson, and on deck is Paul Hersalk. Good morning, Mr. Davidson.
Hi, good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm here today as Bob Davidson, a 40-year resident of the city and county of Los Angeles. I'm not here today in my capacity, in my former capacity as Bag Monster. I hope that doesn't disappoint anybody. As I'm sure you have heard, the average shopper uses 500 bags per year, and that only 5% of those are actually recycled. By failing to implement an ordinance at this time, you are encouraging the use of products that are designed to be disposed after one use, but really never go away. Plastic bags don't biodegrade, they're with us forever, because they only break down into smaller and smaller particles after they have spent years littering our beaches, parks, waterways, as urban tumbleweeds. An ordinance would assist Harrison and Gold Coast by reducing the number of plastic bags, which currently clog their machinery, and make their job more difficult. Because Gold Coast does not accept plastic bags in its recycling bins, the bags that it does receive goes either to landfills, goes to landfills, because there are no foreign markets, they've simply dried up for the used plastic bags. Through your participation in Beacon, you have already funded and done most of the heavy work in preparing an EIR, and drafting an ordinance. To complete it would require only minor tweaking at this point. A single-use bag ordinance would reduce litter in general, and greatly assist the county in complying with stormwater and solid waste diversion mandates set by state regulatory agencies. Similar ordinances have proved successful elsewhere by changing shoppers' habits and encouraging them to bring reusable bags. One year after the ordinance went into effect in Los Angeles County, the county reported a reduction of 95% use of single-use bags, and that included a 30% reduction in the use of paper bags. In Santa Monica, the surveys that were taken of shoppers entering and exiting stores before and after the implementation of its bag in 2011 revealed the following. Before the ordinance, 70% of... Before the ordinance, 70% of shoppers used plastic bags. After its ordinance, 70% either used reusable bags or no bags at all. And the stabilizing trend is that shoppers are now using 30% reusable, 30% paper, and 40% no bags at all. Now, I interpret that as a win because bags are a problem, and if there are no bags, there are less problems that we have to deal with. Before 1970, there was no such thing as a single-use plastic bag, and shoppers seemed to manage just fine. Now, I've heard comments today about why not let the state do it. Statewide legislation has been defeated four times in the past. Sacramento Bee recently reported that since 2012, the plastic bag industry has spent almost $646,000 lobbying to prevent California become, from becoming the first state in the Union to pass such a law. By just last week, the proposed legislation was stalled in the Senate Appropriations Committee when it was placed on suspense. This is an almost certain precursor to allowing it to die in committee before the end of the legislative session on August 31st. Every day we go by without a plastic bag ordinance here continues to litter our parks, waterways, and landfills with these urban tumbleweeds that we don't need. Now, some people complain about the idea of charging for paper, but I tell you, it is necessary in order to change shoppers' habits. Without it, there is little or no incentive for shoppers to bring their reusable bags. Similar ordinances have proved this to be successful. Two years ago, Ojai moved forward with its own ordinance, and by all measures, it has been a success. I urge you to adopt the recommendations of Supervisor Bennett and Zaragoso, and to direct your staff to put the finishing touches on the proposed ordinance. By doing so, you will be joining more than 100 jurisdictions in the state of California which have similar ordinances. Before I step down, I would just ask others in the audience who will not be, have an opportunity to speak today to stand if they support such an ordinance. Thank you, and thank you for your approval of this recommendation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Good morning, Mr. Davidson. Paul Hersalg on deck, Bill Hickman.
Hi there.
Good morning, Mr. Hersalg.
Good morning, Mr. Bennett, or Supervisor Bennett. I just have a couple of quick comments. As you know, I work with Surf Rider through the Ocean Friendly Gardens Program. I'm here, I just heard the comment prior to Bob about having to wash your bags separately from your other loads of wash. I wash my stuff together, and my bags are clean, so I'm not, as a person who advocates for water conservation, I don't see why you have to separate them unless you've got something in your bags that are really nasty. My quick comment was, I was just at a beach cleanup on Saturday for International Surfing Day. We had a great time, but I just could not believe how much trash gets up on the beach. And you think, how does it get there? So, even with the comments about using a different kind of bag, it gets to the beach. We know that because it shows up. I couldn't believe the amount of plastic that was picked up. We need a reusable bag ordinance. It just makes sense. We should have a choice to have that kind of option. And I bring my bags and been doing it for years, and I think it just makes sense. So, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much. Our last speaker, Mr. Bill Hickman. Good morning, Mr. Hickman.
Good morning. Hello, Supervisors. My name is Bill Hickman. I live here in Ventura. I'm deeply concerned about the impacts of plastic litter and appreciate you considering a checkout bag ordinance as a relatively simple way to start addressing the problem. A bag ordinance won't solve all of our litter problems, but plastic bags are particularly troublesome because they are an eyesore in the community, they can fly away easily, and impact the wildlife that we love. I've seen it firsthand when I came across a dead cormorant at Pier Pont Beach that had washed up with a plastic checkout bag wrapped around its head. For years, an industry-funded opposition group managed to slow down bag ordinances in California with scare tactics such as lawsuits. Now that the dust is settling, what type of environmental review accompanying a bag ordinance has become clear. Most notably, the opposition group asserted that CEQA required the city of San Francisco to prepare a full EIR before adopting their bag ordinance, and the ordinance was preempted by the state's retail food code. Trial court decided against the industry group. On appeal, the First District Court of Appeal affirmed the trial court judgment. It's easy to find more details online, but essentially, San Francisco's bag ordinance stood up using a categorical exemption while Manhattan Beach's ordinance stood using a negative declaration. Regardless, it's clear that bag ordinance are good for the environment, and the courts are upholding that. It'd be great to use the paper bag fee as directed in the ordinance for children or education, but I believe State Prop 26 may preempt that. I believe it requires a vote that, from citizens, that may be troublesome. But regardless, the goal is not to have more people purchase bags. It'd be great if nobody purchases a paper bag or reusable bag, because many people already have reusable bags, and this type of ordinance reminds them to remember them when shopping. Groups like the Surf Rider Foundation host bag giveaways, the city of Ventura gives out reusable bags to their residents as well. I believe that estimates from Rincon Consultants in the environmental documents regarding water consumption are overblown because they assume that bags will be washed separately, and just like Mr. Hersalg, I toss them in with my existing load, so I don't see any additional water consumption with reusable bags. Beacon has done a great job to make an EIR more accessible, but an ordinance could be completed quicker using a categorical exemption or negative declaration, so please consider that. While some people may not see it significant to bring in the unincorporated areas, I know the city of Ojai would love it. I've talked with councilmembers there that would love to see the stores in Oakview to have a similar ordinance that would cover that region. And it would send a great signal to the city of Ventura councilmembers to finalize their bag ordinance as well. So, please support the item and move it forward the way that you feel is best. I do have a little bit more time, so let me just pull-
You don't have to use it.
I'm not. Just real quick, I just wanted to pull up the photo that I did take with my smartphone of the cormorant down there, there at Pier Pont that had washed up, just to show the impact here locally, and we can take a step globally. So, thank you for considering this.
That'd be a helpful picture for us to have into a PowerPoint at some point in time.
Sure, I'd be happy to forward it on to you, absolutely.
If you could forward that, yeah, we would appreciate that. I know we have one other speaker, and while that speaker's coming up, number one, I allocated five minutes for everybody because we only had four speakers, and I don't know how many more speakers we have, just one more or two more? Oh, just one more. Okay, good. So, while Debbie Tygel comes up, I just would like to point out, we heard from Mr. Hickman just then about Ojai and Ventura. I would offer to you, one of the strong interests I have is to make the Ventura River watershed plastic bag free, if we can. And so, you basically have, Ojai has done it at the top of the watershed, we do it in the unincorporated area. Unfortunately, the city of Ventura, the ban did not move forward on a two-to-two vote, but one of the other advantages I see as a possibility is if we move forward, they can encourage Ventura so that we can have the whole watershed be covered by a consistent plastic bag ordinance. Again, I freely admit that it'd be better if it was done at the state level, but part of why we moved this last week is because the state looked like it, they're going to drag their feet again. And, and at some point in time, you have to go forward, and that's part of what, part of what actually has lobbyists start to say, well, we'd rather have one state law than to have to comply with all these various local laws. And so, that's one of the, one of the advantages, but we, what we have to do is actually follow through on that thread of doing something if we want to get state action. Ms. Tygel.
I can also add too, you know, that the city of Wayneimi is also considering the ordinance, also the city of Oxnard, and my understanding is that the city of Carpinteria has already passed the ordinance too.
Carpinteria has passed it, and hopefully we can get every beach community, you know, in Beacon to do this, right? So, Ms. Tygel.
Good morning. I'm really glad you used the word "forward" because we have to think forward, and actually, we need to catch up with everyone who also has the ordinances already in place. I represent Surf Rider Foundation, I also represent my fourth grade students who are now going to be fifth grade students, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I had to. I couldn't sit there, you could see, I couldn't just sit there. When I walked onto my campus, which was Satacoid, it's now Atlas, the first thing I saw were polystyrene trays, and I've been working for, now going on 18 years, to try to get rid of those. Because the school district didn't vet the situation because of the fear of water, so they turned off and they shut down all the permanent trays, and they took out all the people who are washing the trays and all the washing materials to have at least 1.5 styrofoam trays used by students. When I was doing the study in the beginning, I'd say about 10 years ago, it was 1.5 million styrofoam trays in the landfill by only the Ventura Unified School District because they didn't look ahead. And the cost of making plastic bags or polystyrene, styrofoam, polystyrene trays, or whatever you're going to make, takes water. Water is being used and it's being wasted on these single-use items. And then the transportation of all these items on all these trucks and all the packaging for them is not contributing positively to our environment. So, the whole situation, if we look at it, you know, for the next five seconds, we're not looking at the big picture, which we should have done with the polystyrene trays, the substitute for the permanent trays, and the same thing with the single-use bags. I always hear that people, I was at a retail store, and this gentleman was buying one item, and the clerk asked that gentleman, "Do you need a bag for that?" And I shouldn't have said anything, but I couldn't help it. "You really don't need that bag." And he acted like I was taking away his right to breathe and his right to air, to just anything, and it's really, this is our responsibility to be stewards of this planet, and for all us to join together and to all work together to help it move forward and to think about things that were done and how we can repair the situation. So, that's what I have to say. I couldn't sit still, and my students were so complimented when they decided to take on this project themselves. I had fourth grade students, and Cheryl Heitman, when we were at the city council meeting, complimented my fourth grade students on speaking so eloquently from their hearts when they decided to reach out to the city council and speak about what they felt about the single-use plastic bans. So, I totally endorse this ordinance.
I wonder where those fourth graders got that motivation, as can to me. Debbie, thank you very much for, for taking care of those fourth graders and for coming and testifying today. Appreciate it. That ends our public speakers. I'm going to end my comments with just, just one thing, and that is that I recognize this is an adjustment for us to make in, in our county and our society, but there are so many cultures and societies that have easily adopted this, this approach. And so, there are lots of places where you go, and then they can almost say, "Oh, what do you mean, you didn't bring a bag? What do you mean, you didn't bring a box? You're buying something, you need to be, you need to have a way to get that home." So, will there be some adjustment? Yes, but is it an adjustment that is well worth it? If you, if we can get the Ventura River watershed alone, if we could get Ojai, an incorporated area, and Ventura alone, that's a major watershed here in Ventura, and those bags would work their way all the way down the beach towards Oxnard, et cetera. It would be a tremendous improvement and a pretty insignificant, actually a beneficial change for all of us in terms of behavior. And it would, it would force me to be more thoughtful about when I get out of the car, grab the recycled bags and get into that habit. So, over time, it is one of those things that society after society is very easily adjusted to in many other places where people are just expected to bring their own materials to haul their, their items home. With that, I certainly appreciate Supervisor Aragoso's work at Beacon on this, with us on this, and I'd be moving-
I'd like to share one more thing, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
One of the things too, that we have, you mentioned the Ventura River, but we have several waterways here in the county of Ventura that are subject to the TMDL Regional Water Quality Board, and this is a major, major expense, and those agencies are required to implement a program to clean up all the trash in the waterways. And by adopting this ordinance or looking at this ordinance, that's going to reduce a tremendous amount of cost and trash in those waterways. So, I think it's important that the public understand that too, and those were mandated by the Water Quality Board Agency, so I just wanted to share that.
All right, so we have a motion.
And this will also apply, obviously, to the Oak Park area, which has stores there too, and they're in the Malibu watershed, and realizing that LA has this ban too, so that would be great to continue that at the upper watershed. And I would ask that you include in your motion to have staff look at how we can, if we can, have the funds, instead of going to the stores, go to a children's environmental education perhaps through our fishing game commission.
Certainly ask staff to look at that, so we at least get the answer on that before we have to make a decision.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Supervisor Long.
I might, I'm going to support this. I think there, comments have been made, I would prefer that there were statewide. I think we all would, because we will raise the bar by, in the unincorporated area, if it comes back, and we all agree with this, but unless we get where the population, urban centers are, and the public informed and engaged and supportive, we'll continue to try to battle this. If you take, anyone takes a look at Googling ocean garbage dumps, you will find websites for the Pacific Ocean garbage dump, for the Indian Ocean garbage dump. We have to do something. It's impacting, it's not just plastic bags, obviously, it's other things, but plastic bags are significant. So, I, I would prefer a statewide one, but I'll certainly be willing to look at the ordinance.
All right, we're ready to vote.
Let me just, let me just say, I'm not, I'm not in support of this, but I appreciate, you know, the idea you're trying to accomplish. It just, this doesn't seem to accomplish a whole lot. First, first of all, I think there's a lot of this that we take, take out food and a few that don't. You know, part of the issue, I know with my own kids, you've done this, or with my grandkids, you go to the, you go to the park, you're going someplace and, you know, throw that bag out. Don't, don't throw it in that one, that's overflowed. Throw it in this one because it's going to blow out and everything else. You know, it'd be nice if some of the, even at the parks, picked up their trash on a little more regular basis, because I think we have a lot of that that goes on, and a lot of the stuff that goes on in the river is where a lot of that trash comes down. I just, I just don't like the idea of us looking to do that. We already heard some of the other consequences of doing some of this. I was up in, in Carpinteria, and we stay up there at the beach, and, you know, just walked into the store to pick up a few things, whoop, didn't have it, and they said, "Well, we don't have any giveaway bags, we don't have any bags." It is, it's not as convenient as you really think, especially for an outer-towner who comes in, who may just be driving through and to do that. I just don't think it's the opportun, way we're going to do it, because it doesn't stop the issue of the 21 retail stores we're dealing with. And I know you want to try to make a statement that we're going to do this, but it doesn't seem they've done it in LA, and we've talked to people in LA, it doesn't seem to have stopped everything in LA, or a lot of stuff in LA. It goes back to us being personally responsible too. We need to put away our trash. We need to, you know, make sure we don't. And so, because a few people, or a lot of people, let's say, don't, doesn't we do the rest of it? I mean, you ever talked to the, the little old lady who said, "It's sure easy to put a plastic bag around my arm and grab that instead of my hands, it may have a little arthritis to carry the, the plastic bags." There, there's a lot of other opportunities, I think we can look at them in doing this. And, and for us to do clean up and do that, there's no question, we need to do a lot of that. I appreciate the people who are willing to go down and clean up the beaches. That's really, you know, something special. I just don't see us say, "We're going to do this whole thing and it stops everything." I just, I just don't see that, that happening. And then the other side, I mean, sure, some people can say, "I throw my bag in the trash," I mean, in the, the wash and do that. I mean, there's been a lot of enough studies that people get sick, and I sure don't want to carry a bunch of meat in there and then not wash it and bring something else the next day. We know that's not a good idea. Anyway, I just, I just don't want to, I just don't believe in supporting this thing. But anyway, thank you.
Well, we saw the, we saw the vote up there already. I do want to respond to one thing you said, you know, down in LA, it hasn't stopped everything. If the standard is that we have to have something that's going to stop everything, we'll never pass anything. The question is, is it a substantial improvement?
It's substantial, but a lot of it is, sometimes, education, people just get, I know when I was a young kid, if somebody threw something out, or the Boy Scouts threw something out, you stopped, you get out of the car, we walked a mile back, picked every piece of trash, and people took responsibility for their idea. I mean, I don't know, a lot of these people are throwing their trash in the ground. I mean, I don't know if that's going to stop a lot of it.
It's funny, my, my child who does, who lives in the LA area comes to go shopping here and is so surprised that they're getting a free bag, so it's just a matter of perspective, you know? It will become the norm.
Well, I guess. But it's also funny, the first Earth Day we had, they were saying, "Ban, you know, ban paper bags." That was the first thing. Now, we're going back to paper bags. I mean, it's, it's-
If you shop in Oxnard over Costco, there's no, no plastic bags there, so people find a way to-
Well, there's no plastic bags at Costco.
And Trader Joe's and a lot of stores and stuff.
All right. I think because we're behind, we'll, we'll go on. That motion passed four to one, and we'll look forward to the CEO, working with CEO on that. We appreciate all the- We appreciate all the speakers coming in today and testifying on this item. We have...
Does the Boys and Girls Club, I'm wondering if they have that schedule?
Yeah, we have, we could certainly, we got the Boys and Girls Clubs. Let's, board members, anybody have a problem with us jumping right to item 39 for the benefit of the Boys and Girls Club members? All right, so we'll go to item 39, resolution honoring the Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Oxnard and Portway Namy for 60 years of quality youth programs for children in our community. Thank you, children, very much for taking the time to come in and for our Boys and Girls Club leaders also. Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yeah, and I wanna think again for, I wanna apologize for the rest of the folks that are waiting on other items, but I, we have a lot of the children here that I think that we can, they probably, there's no school, maybe there's summer school. But anyway, I, it's, it's an, it's an honor for me to, to have this resolution for the Boys and Girls Club, you know, the Greater Oxnard and Portway Namy for celebrating 60 years of youth programs. And I really wanna commend Tim Blaylock, you know, for the good job that he's done and some of the board members. So I, really it's gonna be an honor for me to, to share this information. I'd like to call Tim to the, to the podium here and I'm gonna read this, Tim, and then you and maybe I see a board member, Duardi here, and some of the kids that are here today, but let me, let me go ahead and read this and then we can call all the kids up to, to take a photo or so. And this is a resolution honoring the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Oxnard, Portway Namy for 60 years of quality youth programs for our children in the community. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Oxnard, Portway Namy celebrates 60 years on June 11, 2014, as the original Boys and Girls Club located on 126 East 7th Street, opened their doors back in June 11, 1954. I was only a little boy when I started, I went over that there too. For 60 years, or say this helped, tens of thousands of youth between the ages of six and 18 reach their fullest potential through a positive environment, long learning, quality programs dedicated to the arts, education, character, leadership, development, health and recreation. For the Boys Clubs of Portway Namy and Oxnard never turns away a child due to financial hardship. And I think this is extremely important. If they don't have any money, you bring them in. You have children in 13 school program sites, one housing site, serving more than 9,000 members annually throughout the Oxnard and Portway Namy area. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club build a better community by providing quality programs year-round in character, leadership, development, education, career development, health and life skills, arts, technology, sport, fitness, recreation, at virtually no cost to the member or to their families. Whereas the organization positively influenced children and teens, have proven that 96% of the kids graduate from high school. And I think this is extremely important in Oxnard compared to the 70% nationwide. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club is a national leader, the Boys and Girls Club in California, second in the nation to open a site at a state-run Juvenile Justin Center. And we opened a center there at the JJC, which has been very, very successful. The teen club, teen center located at the original clubhouse, a full-service teen center, or the biggest, or the only full teen center in the county, designated for holistic safe place for teens and tutors, recreation opportunities, arts, technology classes, boxing ring, gym, climbing walls, cooking classes, mediation and college career center. That's the only center, teen center in the county. Where studies have shown that the club memberships are more likely to graduate from high school and less likely to encourage risky behaviors, as we've proven over in Nylon Acres, resulting in juvenile arrest, teenage motherhood or substance abuse, who are, who are members of the, who are not members of the Boys and Girls Club. For every dollar, for every dollar spent, we save $17. There's a return of $17 to the community. Now therefore, be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors commends the Boys and Girls Club of the Greater Oxnard and Portway Namy for its ongoing dedication and commitment to the community. And our youth for the last 60 years look forward to providing greater futures for our children for decades to come. And I'd like to come down and present to you, Tim, and I see a lot of the board members here that might wanna share some comments also.
Yeah, please.
And the kids also, yeah.
Well, we invite the kids up and if any of them wish to speak to, Tim? Any comments? Yeah, come on up. Please come to the...
I just put them on the spot.
That's all right.
They're okay though, they normally can do this.
That's right, I know they can.
Um, yeah, sure. Okay, so I am Gladiatojatis, also known as, okay. I'm really tiny. Is that good? Okay. Um, so I am Gladiatojatis, also known as CJ, and I've been a member at the Boys and Girls Club for about two years. The only way I was, I even started was through community service. I got into some trouble and I had to do my hours. And I had to do hours for about 75 hours, which lasted about two weeks. And thanks to one of my mentors, one of the staff members at the club, they actually convinced me to stay for a third week. And so I stayed and within the third week, I made my friends, Glenda, Claire, Anna, Michael. And with that, I actually ended up staying for the last two years. I'm out of trouble, I recently graduated from high school, and from that, the Boys and Girls Club honestly changed my life. I dropped all my bad friends, like I said, I made all these great friends and because of the club, like I said, I just stayed out of trouble. Thinking about it, I actually wished I would've gone to the club sooner because I probably wouldn't have gotten into that mess. And I have a younger sister and she kinda saw me do the trouble stuff that I've done, but I'm actually convincing her to go to the Boys and Girls Club on Fifth Street at Oxnard to start off there to hopefully, she'll find someone like I did within the club to keep her out of trouble and keep her there and hopefully go into the teen center like I did and just stay out of trouble.
How'd you do, you guys?
Oh, yeah, like I said, I graduated, so I'm, I'm going to Oxnard College. Some of the staff members within the teen center are actually helping me with that, so I'm on the right track right now.
That's great.
And after that, I wanna go to Cal Lutheran or Santa Barbara State.
Congratulations.
I, I just wanna say thank you to all of you. You know, we can't do this, it's not just the Boys and Girls Club, it's a community effort, it's a partnership with government, it's a partnership with individuals in our community and we're extremely proud of the 60 years that we've already been in our community and we hope to be there many, many more years than that, obviously. Hopefully another 60, so that we can influence other young alums like John Zaragosa. So, we, we're very grateful to Kathy Long as well and many of you are, represent our area as well besides John and Kathy. So, thank you very much for all your support.
Thank you, Tim, for your service.
Duardi, you want anything? I know we have some of the members, oh, we have a, oh my goodness, hold on.
This is our new year, 2014.
All right, congratulations, all right.
Okay, my name is Anna Heath. I've been a member to the Boys and Girls Club on Fifth Street for 12 years. That's longer than even some of the staff members have been there. But, I mean, at first I started just going after school. My mom needed us to be somewhere while my dad was in Afghanistan and my mom had to work long hours. And I would just set my backpack down and run into the gym. I was probably the only girl in the gym. But growing up and then when we finally moved to a teen center, I met not only all these wonderful other teenagers and even little kids, but they inspired me to do better. I did have a rough time my sophomore and my junior year and they inspired me to do better. And it wasn't just them, it was also the board members, they helped me out a lot and especially Tim. He's been there since day one and I'm really thankful to have him at our club and we are gonna miss you dearly and we'll keep the club safe for you.
All right. Nice. As you can, board members and the public, you can see the good work that, that Tim has done. And by the way, Tim's got a new position, he's gonna be the Pacific Regional Manager for the Boys and Girls Club. So, I know you're gonna do excellent work there and there's anyone else who wanna share anything with us? No? Why don't we invite all the board members to, to take a photo with us? Do you mind?
And just also point out Supervisor Zaragosa just got an award of $38,000 from the county for the gym in Nylon Acres.
And Tim's gonna help us. Come on, kids. The tray's just gonna take that. Let's get all the other supervisors. Yeah, where's the other supervisor? Michael, get up. Mike? Mike helps a lot. Tim, thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you.
Good to see you. Good to see you, John.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming in, kids.
Thank you very much. No way. Steve? Thank you. All right, thank you very much for your patience. We're a little bit behind here in terms of the program. This is a, if, if board members don't mind, I'd like to go right to the TEACH program next. We're gonna jump over item 36 so that we can do item 37 and we have people in the audience waiting for that. And this is our, our once-a-year opportunity to recognize and honor the 2014 Training and Education for Achievement by Children, which is we, the acronym is TEACH, funds for our out-of-home care scholars. This is a Ventura County Community Foundation, it's funded through that program, it's been awarded to foster youth and previous foster youth scholarships to continue their education. $28,000 been put into the program for this year, scholarships to 30 deserving youth. Then, this is the fifth year, that's, we've had that for 20 years, the program's been out there. And Mr. Matheny, we really appreciate you and Linda Bowman and your, your leadership, both of you, in terms of the program. The program's also had a separately funded TEACH Opportunity Scholarship and this time it's gonna be $17,000 and that's gonna fund five youth for significant contribution for their education. And then in addition to that, you know, this idea that we are all the extended family of the foster youth in Ventura County. We have Vicky and Cindy Smith here in the audience today and where are you, Vicky and Cindy Smith, right? Stand up for us, would you please? Let's give them a hand. They and their... Now, now I'll tell you why, they and their third sister funded $10,500 in additional scholarships just this year alone for three students moving forward. So, that's a huge contribution, $10,500, the Smith sisters stepping up. And what we really hope and what we're finding happening is as the Smith sisters do something, as the scholarship fund continues to grow, as Linda and Larry talk about this, that other people in the community step forward and try to help with the financial costs that our, and I say "our" with a big, bold "R," our foster children are going through, our, the children of our extended family are going through and facing as they're trying to get the training they need to be successful in life. And so, without any more comment, I'll turn it over to Larry Matheny and we have some certificates and, and as part of the program. And is it pie again at Marie Callender's afterwards?
It most definitely is. The invitation remains open if you could just wrap your meetings up.
We have to change the way we do the board's agenda here. We need a break right after TEACH scholarships.
Possibly I could just give you a wink, you could say you're going into executive session.
There you go, all right. You know how county government works, right? There you go.
It hasn't all dissipated, yeah.
Well, we got, we've got the scholars here today, so we really appreciate them being here.
We do, we do. We have some great young people that are here today. It's one of those things that is really encouraging when you, you look at the fresh faces from year to year and then some returning scholars who come back and you, and you see that rising above obstacles, that young people will be dedicated to getting an education so that they can be self-sufficient and not dependent upon others. This is a time for them to be dependent upon us to some degree in helping them with the finances of college and we're so glad to be able to do it. You mentioned 20 years for the anniversary of the Basic TEACH Fund. It's hard to imagine that our fund started with $34,000. And through some careful stewardship through VCCF, through some scraped-together fundraising in the early years, selling pens and note cards that Barbara Fitzgerald designed and just kinda keeping the program together, we attracted the attention of people who had more means and who had very willing hearts to help out and add to our endowment. So that now, essentially, we have about a million dollars in the endowment between the two TEACH-related funds, which is just extraordinary to me.
Wow, $34,000 to a million, that's a...
Yeah, within, in the midst of giving out generously, year after year after year. It's, it is a true fishes and loaves experience along the way. And I, I wanna commend you, Mr. Bennett, for your active interest in what we have been doing. It is an encouragement, everybody on the committee, it's an encouragement to the kids and to know that we've got you firmly in our camp is, is an encouragement to me to, to keep on going. So, I thank you for the willingness to make the plight of foster children and that special role of being really part of all of our families to one degree or another. I, I can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you. Now on to the children.
Yes, let's, let's get on with the children. Would you come on down and, and provide those certificates? Yes, we, we are being hosted by Marie Callender's for I think it's about 13 or maybe 14 years for pie and coffee for, for the kids and, and for their support network who comes along and for any board members who wanna slip out and just say you're taking a break. It's there, or Mr. Powers, you could, yeah. All right. And so, well, first of all, let me, let me ask the, the TEACH committee members, would you stand and just be acknowledged? These, these are great people that helped go through some wonderful process. And we have our kids here and...
Here or just the first names?
Okay, yeah, just the first names, all right? So you got that, first names. Cecilia?
And when you come up, would you stay up here because we're gonna have a photo op?
I would add that some of these young people are receiving one scholarship from the Teach Fund, some of them are receiving funds from the Teach Opportunity Fund, and as you kindly mentioned, also some funding through the Smith Foundation that was set up by Bud and Martha Smith with tremendous foresight many years ago. And what a great example of how to leave a legacy behind once you reach the pearly gates, to know that what you have worked hard to amass is continuing to work in your absence. It's a wonderful, wonderful example of how we all can be generous. So, shall we get the photo op?
Thank you. Well, yeah, we would like to do a photo, but I think the key people I'd like to have in the photo are your committee members and like to have the Smith sisters. Would you please come on down? And Barbara, would you come on forward? And anybody else that's been working on this. What we'd like to do is have you, young people, come up here in the front row, all right? And then the adults will stand right behind you, right? Pick an appropriately short enough person to stand behind you. And so, the adults, if you're in row two, and Anna will take that picture here. We also want to thank Barry Zimmerman. Why don't you slide a little bit to the right, please, students? Students, a little bit to the right. The adults move in behind you. There you go. All right, is everybody in?
Yep.
Cruz, just move back a few rows, right? Take this picture, right? We can go out to the side.
I can peek through.
If you'll come with me. Could the board members stand back there, please? Really, it works out nicely, right? How about just spread yourself out evenly? There we go.
He wants you to stand there and look at him.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you for your... of the County Living Wage Ordinance. Do we have... There's not anything that we need to do? No speakers, right? Do we just need to read this? All right, great. We just need to have the vote. Supervisor Long?
Remove the recommended action.
All right. Oh, yeah. We open the public hearing? We close the public hearing? Thank you very much. I appreciate that. To remind our supervisor, Park?
Nobody here speak to us? No? No.
And he says he doesn't have to read it? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Second read.
And that passes four to one. We've done the Teach scholarship, and now we have a resolution honoring James Michael Reed for 29 years of dedicated service here in Ventura County. And Mr. Reed, would you please come forward? And Mike Pettit, would you please come down also, right? I have the pleasure... Twenty-nine years service to Ventura County. And Mr. Reed, we traditionally try to read this resolution so that all of us can sort of figure out what you've been up to for 29 years here in terms of helping out. And it's always a pleasure for us to sort of see, you know, what kind of talent and what kind of careers people have had here. So, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors honoring James Michael Reed for over 29 years of dedicated service to the County of Ventura. Whereas, James Michael Reed began his public service career working for the Information Technology Services Department on May 6, 1985, as an information systems programmer, analyst, and over the next 29 years received many promotions, eventually becoming the Assistant Chief Information Officer for the county. On June 5, 1994, Mike was promoted to a Senior Information Systems Analyst, on 1996 to Project Manager, 2002 to Deputy CIO Systems, and finally, 2006 to the Assistant Chief Information Officer responsible for overseeing all operational activities of the IT Services Department. Mike's diligent work, ethic, and knowledge, he's earned the respect and recognition of his colleagues in the agency as well as throughout the county family, with whom he's developed many professional and personal relationships. Mike has received many awards, letters, and certificates of appreciation. On November 20, 1986, Mike received a memorandum from the Auditor Controller's Office from Norm Hawkes thanking him for being instrumental in the design and completion of the new M204 ARC system. Mike received another memorandum in 87 from the Assessor's Office Development Team thanking him for the successful rollout of the... The successful 87-88 roll year for the Assessor's Office. Mike was selected as a Ventura County Information System Employee of the Year in 1995. In 2003, the County of Ventura was recognized by the Center for Digital Government in partnership with the California County Information System Directors Association. They presented their inaugural Best in California Technology Awards, and the California VAX Association received the Best Technology Collaboration Program Award. Matt Carroll, then Chief Information Officer, acknowledged Mike's role as one of the original developers of the VAX and being a key contributor to the success of the state's premier example of inter-county collaboration and efficient utilization of taxpayer dollars. And in 2008, Mike earned his Lean Six Sigma Value Stream Champion Training Certificate. Whereas, after more than 29 years of dedicated service to the County of Ventura, Mike has decided to retire from public service so he can enjoy music, Epicurean delights, traveling, and spending more time with his family, friends, and especially his beloved grandchildren, Luke and Ashley. Now therefore be it resolved, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring James Michael Reed for over 29 years of loyal and dedicated service to Ventura County, and we wish him a long and happy retirement. Mr. Pettit, we're gonna put you on before we ask for some sage words of advice from our 29-year departing. And do you have anybody in the audience here that you have brought with you that you want to talk about, Mr. Reed?
Yes, my wife is here.
Well, we have her come on down, right? There we go. Share this moment with you.
While Cindy's coming on down, I just want to share, this is a bittersweet moment for me. Mike Reed has been a manager, leader, mentor, and friend to many in our department and throughout the county. And from my standpoint, he's retiring too young. And so, we're gonna be sad to see him leave our ranks. Mike has been... His contributions to the county have been numerous and extremely valuable, and they've been out of a heart of service and caring. And so, it's a great opportunity here to recognize the wonderful work that Mike has done, and we can't thank him enough for his service to the systems. I'm sure that as he retires and opens this new chapter of his life, he'll continue his life of service to the community in other ways, and I wouldn't be surprised if we see him here at the board, maybe with public comment or some other remarks, because he has a heart for service. So, thank you for the recognition, and I thank you, Mike, for your time. And I also want to recognize Cindy. I can tell you, Mike puts in a lot of hours here at the office, and many times, late at night, he'll get a gentle call from Cindy, who's been very, very supportive of him throughout the years. And I know, in my case, and I'm sure in Mike's case too, behind our contributions is the support of our wives, so definitely appreciate that very much. So, thank you.
Mike, what are your thoughts here?
Chair Bennett, CEO Powers, board members, I just want to thank the county and the board for all the opportunity they've afforded me all these years and my department. Hopefully, my dedication and hard work has helped improve our position in the county with all of our customers and moved our mission forward and helped provide better service to the businesses that provide service to our constituents in the county. So, with that, I guess the only other thing I would like to do is thank my two children, Stephanie and Chad, for putting up with their dad being here all those long hours through all those years. So, with that, I'll just say thank you again, and it's been a long and challenging career at times, but a lot of fun in others. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Powers? Thank you, Chair Bennett. And Mike, just real quick, echo everything that's been said, but also, I really leaned on you during a time of transition in the department, and you led the department when we really needed you the most. So, I just want you to know, we really appreciate that. I know Mike does, the whole department does. You're a true professional, a great partner, peer, and a role model for all county employees. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just thank you also so much. I just thank you so much for your dedication to the county. I think of all the wonderful experience you have, it's like you realize how well-trained you are going through the Lean Six and all the experience and knowledge you have, that we're losing that. And I know you will be very much missed, and hopefully we'll be able to give you a call now and then and find out where things are. Thank you.
Thank you for your service to and your wife, too. You need a good partner to be successful, and thank you again, and have a happy retirement.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations, Steve. Appreciate it.
I also want to say, we have a number of members of our department here in support for Mike today, and actually, I'd invite you down to stand in the picture, too, so that Mike has a moment of...
Come on down. We all want to see what that IDT department looks like.
All the ones with the pocket protectors.
Let's balance that picture. Okay, we're now at item 40, and let's discuss and file a report on the investments in our treasure.
Good morning. Mr. Hent?
Good morning, Chairman Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. This is the report of the investment fund for the month of May 2014. The report has no particular news in it. It reflects the decline overall in yields on the investments that are in our sector for investment. It reflects that we are paying attention to the difficulties of the large euro-banks, which appear to be facing fines large enough to retire a substantial part of the American national debt, based on the fines that the Justice Department is seeking from them. So, we're gonna wait for a while and see how all that shakes out before we buy any more of their instruments. The... We have also been careful about what we do in terms of our cash flow, so this report reflects, for example, that a very significant majority of our purchases in May were short-term to make sure that we have cash flow during the summer period where it's mostly outflow. And I'll tell you that the June report, which I will write next week, will reflect more of the same. And it will reflect, however, that last night, the SME Valley City Council voted to place a part of their funds with the investment fund that we manage, so that will be a good thing, get more of the community involved in the county investment pool. And I invite questions, of course.
Well, how is it that you've managed to beat the yields of Heritage, LIF, and the three-month Treasury Bill?
Well, the three-month T-Bill is not even a speed bump. It's more like a painted stripe to jump over because they're earning next to zero. Heritage is a fund that was put on our benchmark list by Mr. Hanson. It is a shorter-term fund than our investment pool is, so it has a significantly smaller yield. LIF, the state's LIF, remains a mystery to me, how it is that with the number of employees they have and the broader investment boundaries that they have, and the fact that they are not bothered by trying to remain within the boundaries of a Standard and Poor's rating as we are, how it is that they earn steadily between 10 and 20 basis points less than we do is not for me to understand.
Do you think we should have other benchmarks there that are more comparable?
We could. I would like to add, as a benchmark, the Cal Trust, which is a joint powers authority that has a very similar structure to ours. They have a five-year horizon. They are rated one notch below us by Standard and Poor's, but if you look at their portfolio and their goals, it's very similar to ours, and...
I mean, that makes more sense than like the three-month Treasury Bill or maybe what other counties might be doing, but I'd encourage looking at that so it gives us more information for comparison purposes.
Certainly.
What was SME doing that you moved them from... You were out selling your services.
They... Actually, I was on their consent agenda, and it took them three and a half hours to get there. They were having some difficulties with what looked to me like a poorly-written audit report about a poorly-managed city construction project. So, the combination, which then turned into a big political football, so it was a perfect storm of time.
So, what was... So, where was their money? Where... Like, I know you've gone to a lot of the cities.
Oh, they were in LIF.
Oh, they were in LIF? Okay.
And so, I was able to show them that if they put 20 million dollars into our pool, they'd have a net 20,000 per year gain, for example.
Right. Okay. So, I was curious about where these are cities. So, LIF, even though we're doing the comparison, a lot of these cities and places have, that's where their money is.
I have found that most cities and special districts do not know that they could invest in the Ventura County investment pool. And advising them that they can and providing them with a few facts gives them more options to think about in terms of how to deal with their excess cash.
And it's good for us because having...
And it's good for us because having more money in there lowers all that expense overhead for all the schools everybody else participates, right?
It should, up to a point. I believe that the breakpoint where we might actually have to spend more to run the investment program is about $3 billion, but I don't think we're likely to get close to that, given the rate of return that we're able to secure. So it provides us with more room to maneuver in terms of what we can do on a daily basis, allows us to maintain our cash flow better. More money in the fund is a good thing.
Thank you, Judge. Board members, we have an 11 o'clock APCD hearing. I certainly support Supervisor Parks's suggestion that we look at some additional benchmarks that may be more appropriate for us. So we look forward to seeing what you come up with with regard to that, Judge. But with that, let's have a motion to...
Good.
Oh, great. There we go. We're ready to vote. Thank you. I'm going to try to squeeze three items in if I can ask for the forbearance of the APCD members to get these in. And that's exactly why we asked for APCD to switch to 1:00. We're just constantly doing this. But we have two 10:30 time certain items, and we also have item 57. I'm going to jump to item 57 first, real quick, Human Services Agency, so that they can get back to work. And this is the 12 contracts, item 57, Mr. Zimmerman.
Yeah, good morning, Chair Bennett. Barry Zimmerman, Human Services Agency. And what's before the board here is the annual renewal, the second set of contracts. I was here two board meetings ago with the first wave of annual renewals. All these contracts have gone through the proper procurement cycles and RFP requirements and so forth. Some are renewals on existing contracts and all contained within our budget.
Thank you very much. We're ready for a motion. It's been moved and seconded, and we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
And then now we're at item 41, which is my recommendation that we take a position in support of HR 4685. That's the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act, and that we convey this position to our federal lobbyists and legislative delegation. We have a couple of speakers on this. I'm going to ask the speakers, could you, I'm going to set the time limit at two minutes each. If you can go even quicker than that, we'd appreciate it. I think the board has pretty good information on this item, but because we're way behind and we have a whole group of people waiting for the Air Pollution Control District meeting to start. So Matt Sales, would you start off with us, please? If you can, just try to be as brief as you can. We understand, we want to hear the important things you have to say, so please.
I'll try to be as brief as I can. Thank you. I'm here representing the California Wilderness Coalition, our board and staff. We'd like to thank you for consideration of resolutions supporting the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act.
You don't have to go that fast, Mr. Sales. You can slow down a little.
It's not the first time I've been accused of...
You sound like Hubert Humphrey up here.
Just try to keep you guys happy, you know? We got the Air Pollution Control Board coming up. The lands and the rivers that would forever be protected under the bill are home to the San Joaquin Kitfox, the Southern Steelhead, Smith's Blue Butterfly, the California Spotted Owl, Bald Eagle, California Red Legged Frog, Arroyo Toad, and the California Jewel Flower. Forest is also the focus of efforts to reintroduce the California Condor, one of the world's most endangered animals. The Crezo Plain National Monument, the largest single native grassland remaining in California and home to Tule Elk and Pronghorn Antelope, has also truly wild areas within it that are deserving of Wilderness Designation. Chris Ganch, excuse me, I'm getting over a cold, one of the originators of the Condor Trail concept, an active Condor Trails Association board member, also asked me to thank you on his behalf as he is currently out giving a tour of the proposed designations. HR 4685 also includes language to designate the Condor Trails a National Recreational Trail, recreational through hiking route designated to connect the northern and southern portions of the Los Padres National Forest by a single hiking trail. The hiking backpacking route is approximately 400 miles long and extends from Lake Piru in the south to Botcher's Gap to South Monterey, California in the north. CWC and members of our coalition are proud of the long list of local supporters of the legislation that include First Nations, farmers, ranchers, businesses, mountain bikers, volunteer trail groups, nonprofits, and locally-elected officials. In addition to the environmental benefits of the legislation, it's also important to highlight the important economic role that protected federal lands provided the economy. Based on Forest Service surveys, visitors to the forest include people from across California, the United States, and even the world. Visitors to the Los Padres National Forest contribute to the local economy by buying gas, groceries, eating in restaurants, and staying in nearby lodging and visiting the forest. Average amount of money spent is, per party, is $436. Annual visitor spending in and around the Los Padres National Forest tops $24 million. Again, we thank you for consideration and supporting legislation to protect these invaluable public resources. We look forward to working with you and your staff to see the Central Coast Heritage Act become law. I have a couple of letters of support that I want to drop here on behalf of the Condor Trails Association and our coalition, which includes several other organizations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sales. I did, I sort of skipped over my introductory comments and just say Congresswoman Capps has put together a strong coalition on this. She's worked for a long time trying to make this happen. And when you can grab the headwaters of the Piru, the Sespe, and the Matilla Hawk Creeks, those pretty valuable additions to wildlife designation area. Our next speaker is Chris Nibo, and on deck is Jeff Kuiper. Jeff, if you want to move down to the front, we'd appreciate it. In fact, if all the speakers want to move down to the front, we'd appreciate it. You know you're going to be coming pretty soon here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Nibo. I'm a second-grade teacher at Laguna Vista School in Oxnard, and I'm, I live here in Ventura. I'm a wilderness supporter, a wilderness user. I'd like to thank the Ventura County Board of Supervisors for their consideration of this bill. Congresswoman Capps is a great woman, and this is a great possibility. I've lived in Ventura County for 20 years. I've been able to enjoy the wilderness. It's an amazing place that we have in our backyard. I've been able to kayak the Sespe, ski on Pine Mountain, backcountry ski, and it's an amazing wilderness, not just in California, but in the world. It's worthy of this wilderness designation. And I just want to thank you for this consideration. And as a second-grade teacher, I also, I guess, want to share that it's important for our future generations and for the young people and the possibility it gives for them. Thanks so much.
Thanks for taking the time, Mr. Nibo. Jeff Kuiper and on deck, Jim Hines. Good morning, Mr. Kuiper.
Good morning, Chairman Bennett, members of the board. My name is Jeff Kuiper. I'm the Executive Director of Los Padres Forest Watch. We're a nonprofit organization that works to protect the Los Padres National Forest and the Crezo Plain National Monument, and we enjoy the support of several hundred members and supporters here throughout Ventura County. We urge your board today to support HR 4865, the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act. It would add more than 280,000 acres of permanently-protected wilderness areas to the Los Padres National Forest, including places in Ventura's backcountry like White Ledge Peak, that is above the Ojai Valley and encompasses the headwaters of Lake Casitas, Dry Lakes Ridge, known for its rare plants, unique seasonal wetlands, and views stretching from the backcountry to the coast, and the Cuyama Badlands, where endangered California Condor soar above striking geologic formations. It would also protect more than 158 miles of waterways as wild and scenic rivers, including Piru Creek, Sespe Creek, Matilla Hawk Creek. It would establish the first-ever wilderness areas in the Crezo Plain National Monument, and it would formally recognize the Condor Trail as a National Recreation Trail. We all understand the benefits of wilderness. It protects sources of clean water for our farms, our ranches, our communities, preserves wildlife habitat, promotes outdoor recreation activities like hiking, horseback riding, camping, backpacking, hunting, fishing, and those in turn support our local economies with tourism dollars. Wilderness also ensures that current and future generations have places to explore, imagine, learn, and enjoy, and as a parent, that's really important to me. It's been 22 years since Congress passed the last wilderness bill for the Los Padres National Forest, including some areas right here in Ventura County. The 1992 Condor Range and River Protection Act was introduced by Congresswoman Lago Marcino. It established the Sespe Wilderness, among other areas. And upon signing this legislation, President George Bush stated, "By signing this bill into law, we enhance the diversity and beauty of the nation's lands set aside for the enjoyment of both present and future generations of Americans." Wilderness is a bipartisan issue that we can all come together and rally around. We've worked for five years to get to this point with the bill being introduced, and I hope you'll help us honor Ventura County's rich wilderness legacy and support this important bill.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kuiper.
So your support today is critical to send a clear message to our legislators in Washington, DC, to move this bill forward. Thank you for your support.
Thanks a lot. Mr. Hines, and then Alistair Coines on deck. Good morning, Mr. Hines.
Good morning, Steve. This bill is about protecting Ventura County's great wild places. I'm Jim Hines. I live here in Ventura. Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club's Los Padres Chapter, which encompasses Santa Barbara and Ventura Counties. Sierra Club's the nation's oldest and largest conservation organization. We were founded on the premise of protecting a great wild place. A great wild place that you and I know today is Yosemite National Park. The fire to protect that place spread across to our nation over the decades since, and it brings us all the way here in 2014 to the central coast of California, specifically Ventura County. HR 4685 is probably one of the greatest wilderness bills ever put together by a Congresswoman in our area. It's about protecting the special places of Ventura County, not just for today, but for future generations. It's about protecting the watersheds of the Piru, Santa Clara River drainage, and the Ventura River. It's about protecting the great wild species that this county seeks to preserve, such as steelhead trout and the California condor. But you know what? Wilderness is even more of a personal journey. For me, being a fifth-generation person to be raised by my family in the Ojai Valley, portions of the southern extension of the existing Matilla Hall Wilderness Area, which will loop over the Santa Inez Mountain Range into the upper Casitas watershed area, are portions of my family's historic ranching operations that are now owned by the United States government. A place that I have gone to over the many years that I have lived on the property, former resident of the property, riding my horse with my dog into those great wild places. By the passage of this legislation, the Matilla Hall Wilderness Extension will encompass and protect those lands to be preserved forever. So it's not about protecting something for today's. It's about protecting the future and heritage, natural heritage, of the county of Ventura. I urge your full support of HR 4685 and that you contact the congressional representatives of our county and ask them to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hines. Mr. Coine, and on deck, Derek Pulteney.
Hi, my name's Alistair Coine. I'm Director of Keep Sespe Wild Committee. I don't need to repeat the other supportive comments that have been made already, but we're very grateful to Congresswoman Capps and Brownlee for introducing this measure to protect more of Ventura County's backcountry. Outdoor recreation's becoming more and more of an important part of the local economy, both in Ojai and beyond. It's very cool that this bill also protects some of the river miles that were left out in the previous legislation. In fact, this board, back in 1991 or so, passed a resolution to support the entire length of Sespe Creek, though that wasn't the way the legislation ended up. So we're having another shot at doing that today. So thank you very much for your effort and support.
Thank you for taking the time to come down, Mr. Coine. Mr. Pulteney, and on deck, Sandra Delgado.
Hi, thank you. My name's Derek Pulteney. I'm representing the Ventura Hillside Conservancy today, just thanking you for considering support on this. As you know, we're a local nonprofit preserving the local open space resources here, and because we own property in the Ventura River watershed, it's important for wilderness protection of the upper watershed in the Los Padres National Forest and to protect them as wild and scenic rivers and protected wilderness. All the other comments that we've heard, I support. I don't need to waste your time with that. Also, we just celebrated the Ventura River Trail as a National Recreation Trail. It'd be great to do that, also with the Condor Trail National Recreation Trail as well. So on behalf of 1,000 members here locally in Ventura, thank you for considering your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Pulteney. Sandra Delgado.
Good morning, Ms. Delgado.
Good morning. I'm here representing Congresswoman Julia Brownlee, and I have a statement to read from her. I write today to express my support for HR 4685, the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act. As Ventura County's representative in Congress, I was proud to be an original cosponsor of this important legislation. I share your commitment to protecting the central coast's wild and scenic places, including our beautiful national parks and forests. The Los Padres National Forest plays an integral role in Ventura County's health and economic well-being, and the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act will expand protection of precious forest resources for the benefit of future generations. Not only will this legislation preserve native plants and animals like the endangered California condor, arroyo toad, and Ohio fritillary, as well as sacred stream mash sites in the Ohio Valley, it will also strengthen our local economy. The proposed Matilla Hall Wilderness and Wild and Scenic River additions will protect the streams and tributaries of Ventura and Santa Clara Rivers, whose watersheds supply drinking water and irrigation to many of Ventura County's urban and agricultural communities. The creation of a National Condor Recreation Trail, winding through Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo Counties, will expand public access to federal lands and promote tourism across our region. Furthermore, the Central Coast Heritage Protection Act will protect air and water quality for all Californians, ensuring that Ventura County remains an attractive area to visit and invest in. I appreciate Supervisor Bennett's leadership in this issue and the attention of the Board of Supervisors to this legislation. In addition, I would like to thank Congresswoman Lois Capps and her staff for their work on this proposal. I am proud to join my colleague in this effort, and I urge the Board of Supervisors to support HR 4685. Thank you.
Thank you, and pass on our thanks to Congresswoman for participating in this today, Congresswoman Brownlee. Well, one thing I can say is the wildlife advocates we have are certainly very good verbally. They move fast, right? They carry a lot of texts there in their comments very quickly. So thank you very much for that. If there are no other questions on behalf of the board, I'd like to move the recommended action. It's been moved and seconded.
I'm not going to support this. We already have over half of the Los Padres is designated to wilderness as it is, and there's just no use. I mean, Congress set up a designation for multiple uses, and we're just restricting all these uses, you know, for the rest of the people and everything else that want to be done there. So can't support this motion. And I don't, there's no way it's going to pass in a Republican Congress, anyway, so...
Surprise, surprise.
Thank you to all the speakers. Thank you so much.
This passes four to one, and we're ready for our last item. That's item 42, or not our last item, our last 10:30 item. Supervisor Long and Zergos, I'll let you handle this.
Okay, well, I didn't know you could do it, so I'm on a second. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We bring this forward. The Ventura County Transportation Commission heard this and supported it, and so the board's very familiar with it. Darren Kettle and Chris Berkolo were here, but they thought we'd probably be later in the afternoon on this, so apologies. Pardon me? No, they, I told them to go ahead and leave. We're asking that the Chair of the Board send a letter of support to the Department of Transportation regarding this designation for the Highway Primary Freight Network. It is part of the 27,000-mile primary freight network that's been identified under MAP-21, and it is with the, so full support of the Port of Weneme, that we have the support on this for the port access route, recognizing the port as an economic driver in our county. And I just ask that we would support this and support the letter going forward to our congressional delegation via Tom Walters.
And, Mr. Chair, you know, this connects, will connect Rice Road and Weneme and Victoria, which are the primary freight network lines into the 101, connecting to the 101. And that's a, the Port of Weneme has an $8 billion transport cargo that creates a lot of jobs for the community, and they're really a good partnership with the county of Ventura. So I support this also.
Then just also a note to see that the corridor doesn't grow, you know, widen into the ag land that's around it, too. We have to be very sensitive to the farmland that's in that area.
All right. We have a question, a second. We're going to go.
Mm-hmm.
We are all ready for our Air Pollution Control meeting. We will have a session after this.
All right. Leroy, do we have any announcements coming out of closed session?
We just have a little short announcement, I think.
Oh, I have an announcement.
By the Chair, yeah.
Yeah, I have an announcement, and that is that we've decided to reappoint, reappoint Leroy Smith as our county council. His four-year appointment is terminating this July 1st, and we've decided to reappoint Mr. Smith for county council. Thank you. Need to make sure I got that. I'm not used to making those announcements, you know? That's why we reappointed him, because we're not used to making those announcements when we come out.
Yeah, I should have had a better script for you. I'm sorry.
There you go. No problem. We have, we have a request for item 58. We have a young lady here who wants to speak about libraries and is... We have a young lady here who wants to speak about libraries, and is, is that you back there? And she has to get to Simi Valley for something, and says she was hoping that we would cover this item. So I'm going to ask the forbearance of everybody else on all the other items, and let's just very quickly do this Ventura County library item. This is ratification and approval of authorization for the renewal of the agreement with California Department of Corrections, Rehabilitation Division of Juvenile Justice, to provide Read Adult Reading Instruction Program Services at Ventura County Youth Correctional Facility. And, did you turn in a speaker card or anything? You just, with staff? Okay, great, all right, fine, all right.
No, I just needed to move.
Got to get your library people in here more often, right?
Good afternoon, members of the board. Thank you. Item 58 regards renewing of a contract. Some way, partway through the last recession, we were losing funding for our program from the state, and we had been funding the program at the youth authority for, I don't know how many years, but we've had program in the county for 30, and some portion of those, which is more than 18, we'd had program out there, and we had always funded it from our state library money. And I went to them during the recession and said, "We can no longer afford to do this. We need to have our money going to our local community programs," and they decided to take it to the state level and fund it. So this is the end. Actually, February was the end of that contract, and this is simply going to be to renew that contract for the next three years. So we really like the program. We've got it there. It's going very well, and a lot of good things happening, great volunteers, so I'd appreciate your accepting that.
All right.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? We're ready for a motion.
Good progress.
It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
Thank you for your decision. Thank you for showing.
All right, now we'll go back to our 1 o'clock time certain item that we're half hour late for. Good luck with your trip to Simi Valley. That's it. All right, and that's the Public Hearing Regarding Adoption Resolution Regarding Existing Services County Service Area, Camp Chape Road, 49.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
Chair Bennett, Board members, Mr. Powers. I'm Janice Turner with the Public Works Agency, and the item before your Board is the approval for the setting of the service charges on the property tax roll for the non-county section of Camp Chape Road, and this funds various repairs that are needed for the roads, such as pothole repair. This is an annual assessment that we do, and there's no change in the service charge from previous years.
Are you going to handle all of these items?
The next three, or the next two after this one, yes.
Right, okay, so let's just go ahead and, these rates remain the same, so...
That is correct.
Staff members, we're ready for a motion and a second, and we're ready for a vote, and we'll move on to item 50. That passes. That passes, item 50?
Okay, item 50 is for County Service Area 4, is our Oak Park area, and again, this for the setting of annual service charges on the property tax roll that funds various extended street-lated services in the Oak Park community.
Great, we're ready for a motion. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
These are all public hearings.
Oh, public hearings. Do I need to close the public hearing each time? Do I need to go back, I guess, to close the public hearing?
Well, I think, just to stay on the record that if anyone wants to speak, they can.
Yeah. Does anybody want to speak on items 49 or 50? All right, good. Item 51 is a public hearing also. One more vote? Thank you. So item 51 is a public hearing. Staff?
Yes, this one is for County Service Area 14, and is for, again, service charges to be put on the property tax roll to fund street sweeping in Casa Canajo and Lynn Ranch area.
All right, and I'll close the public hearing. We have no speaker cards. No one wishes to speak, and we're ready for a motion. Lynn Ranch area. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. All right, item 52.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr., good afternoon, Mr. Pacala.
Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Ready, Pacala, with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works Agency. I'll be presenting the next three items. All of them are public hearings. Item number 52 is for Ventura County Waterworks District Number 16, which provides sanitation services to the community of Piru. As your Board is aware, in 2010, we constructed a new wastewater treatment plant. We are not recommending any changes to the current sewer charges for the upcoming fiscal year. However, we are recommending that your Board adopt the resolution in our staff report, which authorizes for us to collect these as part of the annual general county tax roll. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, this is a public hearing. Any public speakers? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. We're ready for a recommendation. It's been moved and seconded. Ready to vote. That motion passes. Item 53.
Item 53 is also a public hearing for County Service Area Number 29, which provides sanitation services to the beach communities north of Ventura, Solomar, Furia, Muscle Shoals, and Sea Cliff communities. All of the sewage from this system is discharged to the City of Ventura Sewer System for treatment and disposal. We are recommending a sewer rate increase of 4.5%. We sent the prob to 18 45-day notices to all of our property owners. We have not received any protest letters from the Clerk of the Board. We are recommending that you adopt our staff recommendation.
I'll point out to the Board members, this is the first increase in three years, and it covers the rising cost. There is significant energy costs in pumping that sewage from the coast to the Ventura Treatment Plant. So I'll move the recommended action. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. That motion passes. We're at item 54.
Item 54 is another public hearing for County Service Area Number 34, which provides sanitation services to the community of El Rio. All of the sewage from El Rio is discharged to the City of Oxnard for treatment and disposal. We are not recommending any changes to the current sewer charges. However, we are requesting your Board to adopt the resolution in our staff report, so that we can collect these charges on the tax roll. That concludes my presentation.
All right, been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And...
Thank you.
All right, I'll tell you, what I'm going to ask to do here is that we have the Sheriff, who's given up his time at sort of our request, to give us an update on the findings. So I'm going to move the item of Board Member Comments. That's, under that area, we're allowed to ask for the Sheriff to give us his, his report on the search for the missing firefighter that we've had up there and stuff. So thank you very much for taking the time to come in. I know he was asking, you know, we were trying to figure out the time. We said close to 1 o'clock, so we're a little bit late, and we apologize for that, but...
No problem. Figured out the appointment of Mr. Smith through, it's well worth the wait.
There you go.
Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers, thanks for a few minutes to share with you. We try hard to get the information out to your Board before it goes out to the public. I'm not sure if you got copies of our press releases. This turned out to be the weekend that we were migrating to Outlook, and our, some of our migration isn't quite migrated yet, so I apologize if you didn't get the information. And so I just wanted to share some of the information about what's going on so far and, and what's going on now. I know I speak for all of you, and I speak for the community and everyone, that our hearts go out to the family of firefighter Mike Heardman, his friends, his colleagues. It's been a very difficult and emotional, almost nine or 10 days now. Now, you may have heard on the news, Wednesday, July 11th, Mike Heardman, an athlete, a father, a firefighter, and fellow firefighter Taylor Bears, left into the Sespe Wilderness out of an area called Doe Flats, and they were heading out for a four-day hike. And it was actually a hike that Mike had taken many times before. He's an outdoorsman. He was familiar with the trail, and the two of them, along with Mike's dog Duke, left. They had hiked for about, they'd hiked two days into their hike, and they stopped to camp down in the Sespe River in a very, very rugged area, and sometime during the night, Mike's dog Duke left, ran off, and Mike left to follow him. They'd been sitting around their campsite in shorts, no shoes, and T-shirts, which is not unusual for them. In fact, not unusual for Mike, who trains barefoot for many of the athletic events he does. And sadly, Mike has not been seen since that time. For the past many, many days, six, seven days, members of the Ventura County Sheriff's Office Rescue Teams, supplemented by teams from Los Angeles County, Orange, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo, Kern, Fresno, the Department of Homeland Security, and the Civil Air Patrol have scoured the backcountry in the Sespe Wilderness looking for Mike. Los Angeles City Animal Control actually sent up their animal rescue team, that all they do is to capture animals in hopes that we could find Duke. They may have heard on the national news that Duke was located. The dog kind of made an amazing journey 12 miles back from the place they were last seen. He spent several days, because we saw him several times, we just couldn't corral him, in and around the place where the hikers were, where Mike was last seen, but ended up making a 12-mile journey back to the original spot where they started, and a random hiker saw him there, called the family. The family called, went over and was able to retrieve Duke, took him right to a vet, put an IV in him. He's very dehydrated, but kind, an amazing part of the story, and unfortunately to this point, one of the only really positive aspects of it. You're very familiar, you've recognized our search and rescue teams before and what they're like, but this dedicated, highly-trained group has been in the backcountry, and the unbelievable commitment they've made. They've searched 20 miles of the Sespe Creek, almost 50 square miles of an incredibly rugged wilderness. And if you haven't been, I know Mr. Powers has actually been back there. His brother, who was a former search and rescue team member, took him back there several times. I cannot describe how rugged it is to you. It goes from the bottom of the ravine straight up the cliffs. We almost lost a rescue member day before yesterday, a 35-year experience rescue member climbing up a hill, and an instant landslide, a thousand-pound rock brushed against him and almost, and almost covered him up. You've heard about the snakebite victim, Bill Herrera, the Assistant Fire Chief in Fillmore, bit by a snake, 53 vials of antivenom. I saw him 20 minutes after he landed at Las Robles, and I saw him just a couple days ago. So multiple other injuries. These people have gone to the backcountry once again. 85, 80, 85% of everybody up there were volunteers through very, very dangerous terrain, risking their lives to try to find Mr. Heardman. About 4,600 hours so far of combined time. I'm really grateful, as I know you are all very grateful, for the work that these people do. Sadly, as a search like this evolves, you start looking and evaluating, what is the likelihood of success of finding a missing hiker like this still alive? And Sunday, I made the difficult decision to say, we're going to scale back our operation. We pulled almost all the rescuers off. We left a couple up there. We've actually made a couple follow-up flights on some new information today, but it's a very limited, ongoing operation at this time. Some of the family members are still up there. We're encouraging people not to go up there. People want to help. They want to go up there. They think, oh, I'll hike back there and I'll find him. And that could very well happen, but we're very, very concerned. It's a very, very dangerous area. We've seen two bears. We've seen a mountain lion. I can count the number of rattlesnakes back there, and we don't want other people to become further victims back there. It's been a very difficult time. We've had a close relationship with the family members. They've been very cooperative and as rational, as reasonable as parents and family members can be at a time like this. They were very, very good to work with. We consulted with them before we announced anybody that we were pulling back, and as best they could, as best a mother and a father can say, okay, we know you're going to stop looking, they were understanding about it. So I wanted to come bring you up to date. Again, I apologize if the information didn't get out to you sooner, and we're still going at it. We're not giving up. We'll never give up. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I just, I just want to thank Sheriff, thank you and your staff, and I know you also have some firefighters out there helping you out, and I just, I just want to thank you and for all the good work you've done for the family and trying to find him, and, well, you did a good job on TV, too, by the way. Thank you so much.
We reached out to you yesterday. I hope, I don't know if you've heard yet, but my staff reached out to you about having people involved in the search come in at the appropriate time here at the Boardroom.
That'd be great, thank you.
For recognition from that standpoint and stuff, and...
All right, well, thank you very much for your time.
Pass on our appreciation, particularly all those volunteers, you know. And search and rescue guys just walked away from their jobs.
They're an amazing group of people.
Yeah, they really are.
And our hearts really go out to the family members and all that, too. It must have been a very difficult time for them. Thank you so much for updating us.
All right, thank you for your time.
All right. Go back to, Board members, why don't we hold on our Board comments for the rest of this time? We'll go back off of Board comments and back onto the regular agenda, since we have people out here waiting for our regular agenda items. So item 55, Healthcare Agency.
Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, Board members, Mr. Powers.
Good morning. Good afternoon.
Barry Fisher, Healthcare Agency. This is similar to what we did last year in our governmental transfer of funds between the state, feds, and the local Gold Coast Healthcare Commission to draw down additional funds that help us with specialty care and physician services. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? We're ready for a motion. Been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. Item 56.
You already did it.
Wait, that's right, we did 50, we did 57 also, 58 we did, now we're up to 59. This is a recommendation of myself and Supervisor Long. And I want to be clear in terms of what this is. This is not a recommendation to change anything regarding our normal practices in terms of public comment. This is just a recommendation to give better notification that when we have many speakers, our regular practice is to cut that time down to five minutes. If you remember when we had the Tiger testimony here last time, people all came, and we did what we always do. We cut the time down with a large number of speakers, and Mr. Gallagher pointed out that everybody had to rapidly scramble to try to cut their five-minute talk down, and so this would, it just seems to make common sense for us to notify people at least as much as we can in our official notification, that that is the standard practice. So basically, this is not to change anything except to make it our standard practice, and I think to keep it simple, a slight modification I would make from what we recommended is to not do the three minutes and two minutes, but just have it be the three minutes, that if, that's traditionally what we do, and so I would just like to have notification put in as many appropriate places as possible by our clerk and our board direction, et cetera, that it is the standard practice of the Board, that when you have more than, more than five speakers on an item, that the time will be reduced, the time, the public comment time is reduced to three minutes per person, so that people can more appropriately prepare, and that's...
I'd also just ask that...
Yeah, Supervisor Parks?
And this is always left to this Chair's discretion.
Yeah, I mean...
And I think, you know, I just want to make note, this isn't a hard, fast rule.
That's right. It's always, I mean, the Chair, number one, you can always say you want to hear more. I mean, we've done that all the time. You say, hey, I want to hear more from this particular speaker. We've asked questions of speakers. It is, it is simply a courtesy to the public to not have, as we had last time, 20 people prepare five-minute talks, and then they all sit there and scramble to try to cross out and cut down, but for them to be more informed, that is our standard policy. But it doesn't lock us in, clearly.
If you decide you want to let, you know, more people go to four minutes or something instead of three, that's up to you.
If, if the topic justifies that, or a particular comment's justified that, exactly.
So the five, I'm sorry, the five and three is still the standard?
That's right. Five and three would still be the standard.
You'd say will be. Could you put the word could be? Because that way it's not, that way it's not so hard, fast.
Generally?
Yeah, generally.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't want to say, I mean, because we already say could in there, and nobody seems to get it. We already say the Chair can adjust this down.
Yeah, but I was saying, because you are putting that three-minute thing, which we don't have now, right?
Right, so, so I would say the... Right, so, so I would say, I would say, the general practice of the Board of Supervisors is when there are multiple speakers, the time is limited to three minutes. That would be, I think that'd be the most accurate statement.
Okay, multiple, without a number five, or six, or four, or three, or what do you, what do you tell us?
Well, if you say multiple, and somebody says it was only two, two people, I mean, what's multiple? I mean, basically, if you know you're coming in on an item where there's gonna be a lot of speakers, the Tiger issue, everybody knows there's a lot of speakers, somehow we should do a better job of letting people know that.
No, no, I, I understand that you're, what you're trying to say is there could be, if you've never been here before, and they don't understand, they don't read that. I guess I just, because there's certain times when there's seven, eight speakers, and it's a big issue, and you wanna hear from all the people longer, that becomes more the discretion. And I think that's what you're trying to leave, is, that's why I wouldn't wanna be as hard and fast like Lynn just said.
And that's where I would just say generally, that is...
Yeah, generally would be a better word than, yeah. I can, I can live with generally.
All right. Okay, well, I wanted to just clarify that before we went to speakers, 'cause we do have some speakers, Supervisor Long.
Well, and it does say that the chair may limit the number of duration of speakers on matters. So, to say that, you know, the board has set a guideline of three minutes on matters, but may, with the, continuing with the same language, that's acceptable. I, you've already caught it out, what the issue was, is that we had folks who were not happy that we went from what they read to be five minutes to less than that. And we've had that before.
Because they do.
And, and one of the issues that's been brought to my attention, well, is, is that, you know, sometimes these are, you don't know how many people are gonna show up, or, and, and we generally know that if it's a matter that's either going through a prior public process with Planning Commission, or whatever it may be before it gets here, that there's already been an engaged public, and you can anticipate that there's going to be, you know, a boardroom full of folks. And a matter of being able to manage the agenda in a timely and efficient matters, really what, there was intent of trying to look at these to be more explicit rather than vague on how much time is given for speaking.
For the benefit of the public, I just would point out, nobody except for Mr. Gallagher making that one statement about people are really trying to change it, nobody contacted me after the Tiger thing complaining, all right, at that point in time, it's just Mr. Gallagher pointed out that people were rapidly trying to do that.
So, this is a guideline really, basically, for the speakers in a major...
Yes, it's, it's, it's try to give a little bit more notification.
And they've prepped for it accordingly.
For clarity's sake, on page two of our agenda, there's wording, and I'm wondering how you would like to change that wording.
I, I, I'll tell you what...
Right now, it, it says that you're limited to, not, not to exceed five minutes, and then the chair may limit the number of duration of speakers on a matter. So, what, where would you like to change that?
What's obviously not working is the note, the chair may limit the number or duration of speakers on a matter. Everybody sees that first part, they all prepare five minutes, they don't, they're not catching that note.
Right.
I'm simply, I'm not trying to micromanage the exact language here, I'm trying to direct staff and, you know, the term, that I want people to know that our standard practice, not the chair may limit, but actually, you know, it's the board's standard practice that when there are, you know, you know...
Major hearing.
I, I put down a number, more, you know, more than, more than five speakers, the, the chair's standard practice is to limit those speakers to three minutes. But, so that's, just identify to people what our standard practice is, that's all it is. So...
So, you're excluding the last part, the six to 12 and two minutes?
I just think it just makes it simpler, as I was looking at it, you know.
Rather than trying to count.
Right, yeah, just makes it simpler in terms of notifications.
The first part of that paragraph, and that was put in place years ago, talking about cumulative, and that was because we had some folks who would come in here and speak on every single item. Maybe it's a matter of, I don't know, crafting that differently in the, how it's laid out on the, on the papers, so that you have that statement, and then the second one is that, the, the new one that would set the three minute. But again, may limit, it's always a discretion of the board, and the board, all the board.
As I had asked Leroy before, I think he had said that we have a, what is that policy, Leroy, that says 30 minutes, or what is it?
Yes, just, I think it might help a little, the county administrative manual already has within it rules of order for the board, they're, they're just guidelines, and it's chapter, Roman numeral two, two dash 11, I think, rule 32, section eight, and it, and it kinda fits in, I think, with what the board is talking about, but the adopted policy is speakers will be allowed five minutes, but you can set a 30-minute total cumulative time. So, that means if more than six speakers are here, they would take up the whole 30 minutes, right? Six times five. So, the policy currently says if, if the total number of speakers would cause you to exceed 30 minutes, you can reduce the time from five minutes to a lower number to stay within the cumulative 30 minutes. So, it, it's already sort of there, that if you have more than six speakers, people are, you know, if they know the admin manual, of course, which they don't read, that you, the time can be reduced from five to a lower number. So, it would be consistent with the existing adopted policy that if there are more than six speakers, the time for individual speakers would be reduced. It, it, it doesn't say to three or whatever right now, but it's been the practice of the board to reduce it to three. And I think, you know, if you were just to add on page two below that sentence that talks about duration can be limited, just a statement that it's the board's practice where there are more than six speakers to reduce the time to three. I mean, you just, it's, it's advisement that that is, has been the practice of the board.
That, with a lot of speakers, it can be reduced, but...
Could be two.
Reading this, though, we certainly have hearings that last, have more than 30 minutes for the public, you know, so that's not even accurate either. The entire public comment period is limited to no more than 30 minutes, I mean...
But that's at the discretion of the board, right?
Well, yes, it's, it's all at the discretion of the chair or a majority of the board.
I, I read that more as referring to on our standard agenda, item eight, where it says public comments.
Public comments.
That we set that, that 30-minute limitation to that.
Okay, so this all needs some clarification, doesn't it?
Now, you're saying it's in the admin, so...
For public comments?
Manual, for both public comment and for comment at public hearings. So, the admin manual says, if you have a public hearing, you sort of have a new 30-minute period. You can limit public comment even at a public hearing to 30 minutes, but it, it wouldn't be cumulative for, a speaker could speak at public comment and then also speak on a public hearing. But you can, you can limit public comment, and you can limit public testimony at hearings. And it's, 30 minutes is what the standard is in the admin manual, but in the chair's discretion or the majority of the board, frequently we exceed that, but that's a discretionary call.
Yeah, I think we've been pretty good not to squash the public's ability to wanna speak. I mean, 'cause some of these, like, I think Supervisor Parks, we've gone longer, we've gone hours on some of these people, not 30 minutes. But I think it's just being careful we don't squeeze individuals down to that two-minute, and I agree, yeah, get rid of that maybe, and just say, could go based on this two, three minutes.
And we haven't had that many either.
Okay, we have two public speakers, why don't we do that, and then we can have some more. We're spending more time on this than, than the...
Two minutes each?
We didn't, we didn't regulate ourselves to, regulate ourselves to five minutes. Right, so, five minutes each for our two speakers, Lynn Jensen, please.
Hello, I'm Lynn Jensen with Ventura County CoLab, and as you know, we come here and comment to the board on a regular basis, and it's generally for land use issues or other business issues, and we appreciate the fact that you're looking at this. We also appreciate the fact that you don't hold us to a 30-minute full timeframe, because some of these things are very complicated. And I think what happens is that, particularly when it has to do with ordinances, these things may be looked at by the county for years, maybe a couple years, maybe only a year, and it comes out on the Thursday night, we get to see that it's coming to the board, and that gives us two working days to actually look at the data, and then come in and have something reasonable to say. And as you were talking about limiting the comments to two minutes, that's really hard. I mean, I know from doing a lot of testimony, it's hard to say much in two minutes. We like to at least have three minutes, of course, we would appreciate five minutes. So, again, we do appreciate it. I, I do not understand why this wasn't timed certain agenda item today. I think, I think this is something that we, that more people in this community would like to comment about in terms of cutting, cutting the time. So, I would keep that in mind, that there weren't very many people, we had lots of people who would have liked to be here today, but they, not knowing when this agenda item was gonna happen, it was very difficult to tell people when to come. I thought it might come this morning, there was a lot of public comment this morning, which pushed the agenda back, and so therefore it came in the afternoon, and with these regular agenda items, it's very difficult to know when to come. So, I think that working members of the public are already handicapped coming to the Board of Supervisors because it's during the day, and everybody works, so that's hard too. I, I think that the minimum time, I agree with you, should be three minutes, and I think that it should be at 10 speakers, not six speakers. I think 10 speakers is probably reasonable, and I think it should depend on the circumstances, the way the letter was written, you really couldn't tell whether it was going to be a hard and fast rule, or whether you were gonna have some flexibility there, depending. The other thing I think that we would like to, to bring up is that in a lot of different jurisdictions, speakers are allowed to designate their time to an individual that they feel might be able to represent their views better. And you could even, you could even limit that to 10 minutes per person maximum, but sometimes we get here and we have a lot of people that wanna speak, and it might make more sense to have one person speak for two or three people, to make it go faster and to get you the information that you need from, from these other people. So, those are my comments today. I appreciate your, your talking about this and looking at this. Agree very much that three minutes, we shouldn't really reduce it to three, less than three minutes, unless there's extraordinary circumstances, and then, of course, you have the ability to do that, so, thank you so much.
Thank you for keeping your comments to two minutes and 55 seconds, right?
Well, if you were, if you were gonna do it, if you were gonna limit it to two minutes, I had a five-minute speech.
Mr. Thompson.
Hi, my name is Dick Thompson, I, you know, you've thrown me off my remarks, I actually appreciate the conversation that you all have had. My real objection is the two minutes. I think that is just too brief a time, and I don't think it serves the interests of the public or, or good policy. I know at the, several times that I've been in front of the board, that I've always been treated, treated well, and that my observation is that people are allowed to make their comments. In fact, I think the board, the person that chairs the meeting does a good job even finding a translator for a person who comes down here and starts to speak Spanish. So, it really isn't about that for me, it's, it's simply about having ample time. And I think three minutes is, is a minimum time that, you know, generally ought to be considered. I think, I know you went to two minutes today, and I thought those guys did a good job, but they were pretty well-prepared. I think three minutes is, is the right number.
Great, thank you very much, and you did that in less than a minute. Congratulations. I would, just, just in the interest of, of the board, had a number of people come up last time after the Tiger hearing and say that the two minutes seemed to focus the speakers, and that they actually thought, some of the speakers said they actually thought they spoke better because they knew they had, got right to their major point. That being said, we're, we're talking about three minutes at this point in time. So, I, I would just like to direct staff, I'm not gonna try to manage the exact language, I'd like to direct staff to work with county council, come up with a language in the CEO's office, come up with a language, and try to do, try to have us do a better job of letting, and I'm gonna use these words, it would be the specific, letting the public know that it is our general practice to cut them down to three minutes, so that people, as a courtesy to people, they don't, we don't have 50 people preparing five-minute talks and then all out there, you see them all crossing, and, and they, and they, they come up, and they don't listen to what's been said before, we want them to listen, so they can either respond or know that they don't have to say that. It allows for better public testimony if the public's more aware of what realistically is the time that they're gonna have. So, I'll leave it with that, and...
I would also ask, one, we put in there, it is the discretion of the chair, and I think you have pretty good wording in there already. And two, I agree that it shouldn't, it should be a minimum of three minutes, we shouldn't go any, any shorter than that. But also, when you look at this, it says the chair may limit the number of speakers, I don't think that is a good thing to be putting in there. So, you know, if we're gonna go back and look at this paragraph, I think we should clean it up, we shouldn't limit the number of people. The idea that we're, you know, limit a, a public hearing to 30 minutes doesn't seem realistic, so I don't, I, you might wanna put that about public comments during the general public comment period. But there, there's a few things in this paragraph that I would clean up and would request that at least that, I'm glad you dropped the two-minute one, and that we also, just, I think you're safe the way we do it, which is that you, it's up to the, the chair, if it, if we have a lot of speakers, that it will be reduced from five minutes. The general policy is reduce it below five minutes, so...
You're suggesting there should be no change?
The thing I see that's wrong in here is you can't limit the number of speakers.
I realize that, but there should be no change on the notification, I mean, but I think, I think...
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's fine the way it is, except it, like you said, it may not be read in the right order.
You may wanna put some big, bold, could be, you know, in that, if they're reading that, that's what they're doing.
I would offer to you, if you think it's fine the way it is, then why do we consistently have the roomful of everybody saying, oh, I had five minutes? Every time that we do it, you have somebody come and say, I prepared five minutes and I didn't.
Then maybe they're not reading this at all, 'cause it's on there.
Well, sure, it's on there, but somehow, somehow, we're not communicating clearly to public, I mean, that's, that's what, so I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that we communicate more clearly.
Are we legally allowed to limit the number of speakers?
I'm not asking, this is not, that's not...
I'm asking the county council.
Can we do one thing at a time? I'm trying to just get this thing, right?
All right.
Which is that, I mean, you can bring up all kinds of things about this page that if you would like to change them, but I'm trying to make, I'm trying to see where we stand on that particular issue first, right? And that is, well, I'm, I'm, you know, the... Supervisor Parks was saying she thinks it's fine like it is, which I would think, would say, no change.
And I'm with you, I have no problem telling people that it could be down to three minutes, I have no problem doing that, maybe put it in bold, so they know.
Someone there needs to be on here.
Yeah, that's fine, I don't, it could be.
Bolder, better.
Yeah.
Maybe staff now, as a result of this, will, will find other ways to alert people, you know, like when you send out the notice, you may say, hey, like the Tiger notice, if we know it's gonna be huge, we could say, hey, the board's general practice is to reduce the time on something like this, that could go with the notification to the applicants, to the people involved in that.
Those are guidelines.
I'd recommend that we task the CEO, the clerk, and county council to work on this page, let's, let's make this public user-friendly. And, and let's, you know, we know we want three minutes if, you know, for the minimum number of time to speak. I read Supervisor, that, that, that sentence you're referencing somewhere says duration of speakers, that it's speaking to them, may limit the number or duration of speakers. So, you're questioning whether we can do that, and if we, you know, revisit that, and then let's have this crafted and, you know, brought back under consent.
I don't wanna limit the amount of speakers.
If I brought back, brought back under consent.
No, I, I don't...
I don't think it's...
I don't think you're legally allowed to, that's why I wanted to ask the county council.
Well, we've never done that.
Can we limit the number of speakers at a public hearing?
I don't think it's, I don't think it's good...
I think you can, yes.
But I don't think it's good practice that we limit the speakers, absolutely not.
You deny people the ability to speak at a hearing?
Yes.
I'll be darned.
Well, I don't think we've ever...
Practiced that.
Practiced that, because I think we wanna give everybody, but you're saying by law you can, but...
Yes, I mean, you have, you can, you can exercise reasonable control, so you don't have to allow 48 hours of public testimony, I mean, you're allowed to put limits on it.
I think, Mr. Chair, just the, you just give them guidelines to, to the public speakers.
I'd like to break this into two things, if you don't mind, because I, I certainly don't support, you know, saying to somebody they can't speak on an item, so I don't support that. But that's, what was agendized for this item is simply the issue of notification.
Guidelines.
And so, I would like to have a vote on notification now, if there's anything else on this page you wanna change, if you wanna have them review everything, but, but quite frankly, that's a whole nother topic, you know, like can you limit speakers? That's not what we noticed for today, that's not what, what we're talking about. So, if somebody wants to bring that up and say, hey, change those things, that's absolutely fine, but I'd like to do that as a separate motion, you know, in terms of doing that.
The CEO can take a look at that. All right, fine.
Okay, right.
So, the motion is...
So, make a motion. Well, one motion would be that we, that we direct the CEO, the clerk, and the county council to try to improve our ability to communicate with the public, that our general practice is that we, that we cut down the speakers to three minutes when we go beyond six speakers, that it's still up to the board's discretion, but that that's our general practice, that's all, right?
I can do that. I can do that.
So, anyway, if, so that'd be my motion. I'll say I can make that motion.
That's fine.
Actually, it shares discretion, not the board's, is how it reads, and that's generally how we do it.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Generally says the chair's discretion, not the board's discretion.
Well, I think Leroy said before, it was the chair or the majority of the board.
Or, or the majority.
Or the majority of the board, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
And...
He's typing quickly.
Because we keep changing it. Yes, we keep writing it different.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote on that.
And that, I, I'd just like to say I appreciate the board's willingness to let the public speak, and through this whole conversation, you can see that there's no wanting to squash public comment, which is great.
And I might point out, and I know Representative McCullough pointed out, that sometimes something comes out on Thursday night, they don't have much. I mean, this board has been as generous as any elected body I've seen, when that happens, to say, "We'll continue the item. We'll, we'll give more time". You know, we, we have not been a board that's been out there trying to cut that down. Now, is, are there any other motions that people want to make at this point?
I don't think it's a particularly good message to have on our agenda that we can limit the number of speakers. And I, I would think the number of times when that would ever come up maybe is once a century, you know? So I, I'd take that off. I don't think it's very welcoming.
And are we, County Council, are we allowed to go into that kind of topic at this point in time?
Well, yeah, I, you probably can't take a, a vote on it right now. I, I think you could direct staff to look into it and get back to you.
But not take a vote on it?
We're looking at revising this paragraph, so consider that in your revisions.
What can, I think you can direct staff to look at this in terms of bringing it back.
Go back to what Kathy was saying, it's just what you said before, Kathy, would just let the staff and Leroy and everybody look at this and see if...
I'm not sure what you said there.
And that person, too.
Do they want to comment, John?
Yeah.
They may by phone by now, so that's...
All right. Okay, so we, we shouldn't vote on it, it's just direction?
Just, yes.
So people are directing, all right? Great. And so we're ready to go on?
Have we finished the vote on the motion?
We did.
It's five zero.
My screen just shows the...
All righty. So we are... All righty. If we can go on, well, you can see why boards don't visit that topic very often, right? Item 60, Supervisor Foye.
I just wanted to recommend that we put these people on these different commissions, the Cemetery Commission, and the Board, and the Area Unaged Advisory Council. Get through this quick.
All right. And we're now at item 62, GSA.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Powers, Matt Carroll with the county executive office.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. We're doing 62. That's the grand jury final report. Two, 62.
Item 62 requests your board to draft responses to the GSA County Grant Grounds Park Host Program. That's probably where that comes from. The report requires a response from your board, and a request of response from the General Services Agency as well. The county CEO's office, as we've done in the past, drafted your board's response after working with the Parks Department. And that response, in addition to the requested response from Parks Department, are available and submitted for your approval here today. Both responses address findings three and four, and recommendations one through six. So both GNA and our, GSA and our office is here to answer any questions you may have on this one.
Do we have any questions or comments for staff? I have, I have, I have one modification I'd like to make, so, and that is into finding four on the campaign finance report.
Oh, we're talking about the other one.
Oh, you're talking about the General Services one at this point in time? Okay, great. All right. All righty, good. All right. So this is on the GSA report, okay? All right.
Okay, item 63 then, is the county's response to the grand jury's report on the county campaign finance ordinance. The original report requested a response from individual members of your board, as well as the county clerk recorder, and requested a response from the county executive office. Now, subsequent to the issuance of the report, we received clarification from county council that per state code, a collective response from your board is in fact required for any operations under your board's purview. So that the collective response is required, and the responses on the part of individual board members were in fact considered optional. As you know, each of your board members did in fact elect to respond to that. And using these responses, our office developed a, a draft collective response that attempted to work with what the consensus of the majority of the individual responses were, and that's how we developed that response. So that response, the collective response, as well as the one developed by our office in response to the requested response, is also included in the package. I did want to make one clarification. In the board's draft response, there is a statement that the government code, and it cites the government code, is, I think, link, believe it's 25-120, is also known as the Brown Act. That should say the government code 25-20, 25-120, and in addition, and in combination, excuse me, in combination with the Brown Act, governs the ordinance update process. So 25-120 is not considered the Brown Act. The two work together. So we'll make that one modification, and anything else your board would like to recommend or request at this time. So with that, we're available to take input or answer any questions.
Okay. If I would just look at this and say, you know, I see that they asked us for personal responses, I guess required those responses from us. And then you went together, put one together that doesn't reflect all of us. So I'd make a motion here that we, instead of what the, what came from the CEO's office's response, that we just say, from, from the CEO, "See board responses". Because that way, we all have our individual response. Because after talking with Leroy, we don't, that can be our response. I asked the DA who does this, Farley, and, and they said that your individual responses is fine. And I think that would be more reflective of what, because each one did. And I can see where Matt would be at a situation, if only three of us responded, he'd have to say, "Well, I gotta make a collective". So if we made a motion to just use our personal responses as our board responses, I think we could, we could do that. And Leroy, am I right with that?
Well, I think the board could fashion this response on behalf of the board virtually any way they want to. So I mean, the board would have the authority to package the response as basically a collection of the individual...
Yeah, the individual responses.
Responses, but in the end, it's what a majority of the board decides to approve as the response.
But the board has to approve a response.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we have to approve a response. And I'm just saying, since we all responded individually, and I'm sure some people are saying, "I wish it was more this, I wish it was more that". And it's kind of hard for Matt to try to, I'm sure it was Matt to...
I'm, I'm gonna speak in opposition to Supervisor Foye's suggestion, because I think there is, I think we should have a, I think that Matt's response basically says we reject the board, we reject the grand jury's findings, and for the most part, we reject the grand jury's recommendations because we reject the findings. I think that is, in fact, the position of the board, the board majority. And the, the fact that we've filed individual responses, it's pretty clear that we're not all unanimously saying that. So the individual response is out there. But I think there should be a collective, what does the board of supervisors think? We talk with one voice when we do that. You can vote against that recommendation, and that'd make it real clear. If, if you voted against it, then it wasn't...
I'm just saying that since we have those responses, we can each put them in, and that's our response. If you want to say it the other way, that, that's fine, too. I would just then ask you to put in there as, I just totally disagree with your response. As part of that, is then, I'd be fine.
I, I would offer to you that, that, that will be very clear if you vote against the response.
I'm just saying we put that in as the response.
Well, the, so the modification I would, I would suggest for the, the grand jury responses under finding four, is we simply add one additional phrase, and it says we reject the, we reject finding four, and I would just add the phrase, particularly the statement that the changes were a solution to a non-existent problem. I think that is the fundamental disagreement that we have with the...
You don't want the recommendation four or...
Finding four. We reject finding four, particularly the statement that the solutions, that, that the changes were a so, a solution to a non-existent problem. All right, that's...
I would also look at the recommendation number two, and, and I agree with you. I'm happy to add that.
Okay.
Recommendation two is looking to find a help resource. And instead of putting more money into getting a staffer, I, it seems to me the, if the Elections Division can't answer it, they can hand a card with the phone number, or the contact email of the, of our, the attorney that oversees it, and they can answer your question if it's a legal question. I just, we have the staff to do it. I don't think we need to establish another staff. They just need to have a reference of who that staff person should be that they need to contact. But I think probably most of the questions can be answered at the Elections Division, in terms of, you know, deadlines and dates. Recommendation number two, they're saying the board of supervisors provide a help resource.
Right.
And I'm just saying, the Elections Division is your help resource. And if you have more questions, contact, we have an attorney that helps to oversee this, and they can provide you further clarification if you still haven't.
But doesn't the CEO's response say such an analysis?
It rejects all the recommendations except for number two. It accepts number two in partial, as I understand it.
It just says, it just says needs further analysis. So I mean, that would be part of the further analysis.
Well, I'm just saying that there's no reason for the board of supervisors to provide a help resource. So I, I wouldn't recommend that we do that. I, I believe that it's not the board of supervisors' need to do that. It's the Elections Division can be that help resource, and if they can't, we can ask them to refer them to our Ethics Commission and Attorney.
I, I would be, I, I, I appreciate what you're trying to say. I, and I certainly appreciate that we don't necessarily need to hire a staff person to be providing that resource. This, this response doesn't say that, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to go on record as saying, "One of our responsibilities in creating the ordinance is to, this is not be paying attention to whether if somebody needs help", and that we should be paying attention to that. What the solution is, is something that needs further analysis, which is what I think this answer says. That doesn't commit us to providing staff. But I, I don't think we're ready to say, I don't think I'd be ready to say what you did, which is that you can go to the Elections Division and get the answer. They, the Elections Division, I think, very clearly says they don't want to be providing advice on, on that. That's not their position.
Okay. And this help resource, the recommendation says should represent the official and legal interpretation of the ordinances. I mean, it seems like a phone number and email is what you need there, and that should be provided. And that's where I would refer them to if they have those questions.
So are, are you trying to answer the question of what the help resource should be at this point?
I'm, I'm saying when the grand jury recommends that the board of supervisors provide a help resource, I'm saying that's unnecessary because we have it available. If you can't, if, if the Elections Division can't answer your question, we have that resource available, and here it is. It's an email or a phone number. You know, of all this grand jury report, this is pretty minor. I'm just, in, in my perspective, the way that the grand jury went about this, completely lost the focus that the stakeholders are the public and the voters of, of the county of Ventura. And their effort to see that we don't move beyond what is already required by the FPPC would basically eviscerate our entire ordinance. I mean, the whole point of this ordinance is to go beyond what the FPPC has, because what the FPPC has is insufficient. Doesn't have campaign limits, for example, and that's a key part of our ordinance. Doesn't require specific disclosures that are, are critical, particularly in enforcing this ordinance. So it, to me, was a, a complete disappointment to see at a time when we're having some of the, you know, most expensive stealth campaigns out there, and the need for disclosure, you have a grand jury report that actually tries to reduce both the transparency and the effectiveness of campaign limits. So I, you know, this is a very minor point here, but I just reject this whole, basically, report.
I, I certainly agree with those comments.
Yeah, and I appreciate Supervisor raising it, and agree that this is probably small in the whole scheme of things in this report, which had significant deficits to it and inaccuracies. And I, I think where it says from the CEO's response that conduct the analysis and consider a recommendation, the time of the next update to the ordinance may just deflect this until, you know, we, we, there's an opportunity to look to see what experiences come out of the next election cycle, and what else needs to be changed or updated. I think there are a variety of ways to provide a help resource, long, long, probably more effectively than to have a, a, a signed body to it. And I do agree with you that the Elections Division is, is historically been a help resource to any voters looking for information on, on, on election rules and guides and, and laws, so...
I mean, the best thing you do is read it. You want to know the information, read it. If you don't understand the wording on some, ask the attorney, you know? And that, that's, that's, to me, is the key.
Well, I, I, I really appreciate your comments about the concerns about the grand, overall focus of the grand jury report. I think that as we're sitting here crafting our official response, that the focus should be on, on the major disagreement we have with the grand jury, you know, and our perception has missed the fundamental focus and effort of, of the ordinance. And that's why I would, I would think that the, I, I would not want the focus to be that we, we take any kind of strong exception to the issue of how to provide a help resource, that there are multiple ways to do it, and we should analyze that in the future. And the CEO's report does that, so that we can stay focused on what I think is the most significant thing, which is we have a major disagreement with the grand jury as to whether the changes were a solution to a non-existent problem. Because, as you said, there are major issues out there, and I, I don't believe that the, the majority on this board, or the majority in the public thinks that there's a non-existent problem out there when it comes to campaign finance and the role of money in politics, whether it's in our, our local county elections or in other situations. So I would think that it's better for us to make the one modification.
I mean, truly, at, my first thought was to agree with them on that, and then I went, "Oh, wait a second". You know, the whole point of this is you've got a law you can read, you can go to the Elections Division, and if they can't answer your simple question, and it's a more complicated question, we have an ethics attorney that you can go to. So I just wondering, you know, it's not that we need to provide this resource, other than just provide them a referral to where that resource is, because that resource exists. And it's not something the board of supervisor needs to do. But I can go either way. At first I thought, yeah, sure, but then I thought, this is not something the board of supervisor needs to provide.
But we're not, we're not agreeing with the recommendation.
Right.
We're not agreeing in any way. We're saying, hey, we got, we have to look at it more. We're not agreeing with it. All right. Okay, so we, at this point in time, I'd make the motion for the one modification that I talked about in terms of the solution to a non-existent problem. And with that, with that change...
I'll second it.
Okay, with that change, I would make that as part of the overall approval of the grand jury recommendation.
In addition to your change, we're incorporating Mr. Carroll's language change regarding the government code.
Yeah, about the Brown Act.
That's right. Thank you very much. Right.
And as you're voting, I'd like to thank Michelle Yamaguchi and Scott Powers in our office, who did a lot of legwork in putting these draft responses together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that passes four to one, and we now are at item 64.
Greetings, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Mike Powers. To be and co-CEO for the county executive office, the item before you is a recommendation for your board to adopt an amendment to the 2014-2017 memorandum of agreement between the county of Ventura and the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association to waive the second hearing required by the personal rules and regs, and at the conclusion of that hearing to adopt the recommended amendment. The proposed amendment will clarify and correct the current language in the existing agreement to express... to express the parties' intent concerning payment of contractual overtime to exclude salary increases related to the 50-50 cost-sharing offsets. Also, the amendment will postpone the timing of the implementation from July 6, 2014 to September 20, 2014. This will give the Ottawa Control's Office a bit more time to program these changes. These are quite complicated changes that we are doing, so we want to make sure we allow their office plenty of time to make sure they do their due diligence and get these changes implemented. On that note, I would like to thank Jeff Berg and his staff, Bally Baraz and Charlie Mattney for all their hard work and diligence and also in helping craft this language to make sure it's exactly what we need in order to get it implemented correctly. Would you happen to answer any questions that you may have?
Thank you, this is a public hearing, do we have any speaker cards? All right, and I'll close the public hearing, we're ready for questions or motion.
What is the recommended action?
Been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, board members, this is a recommendation for your board to hold a public hearing on the adoption of the amendment to the 2013-2016 memorandum of agreement between the County of Ventura and SEIU Local 721, for your board to waive the second hearing required by the personal rules and regs and at the conclusion of that hearing to adopt the recommended amendment. SEIU and the County of Ventura have an existing three-year agreement that was adopted by your board on September 10, 2013. At the time of adoption, SEIU was the first union of the ten county unions to enter into a comprehensive labor agreement that incorporated all of the county's labor initiatives with respect to pension reform, transparency and compensation, overtime cost controls and competitive wages. At that time, your board and our office made a commitment to maintain consistency amongst the various unions with respect to these labor initiatives. SEIU being an early adopter of the county's labor initiatives, was given the opportunity recently to open up discussions with respect to these labor initiatives to determine if there needed to be some revisions. As a result of those discussions, we come before you with the recommended amendment that SEIU and the County of Ventura have entered into. Specifically, the amendment will grant the August 17, 2014 market-based adjustment to all classifications that are not more than 10% above market. We have completed a total compensation study and as long as the classification is not above 10% behind, above 10% market, they will be eligible for the 1% market-based adjustment increase. Additionally, it will convert the 1% market-based adjustment that is due on August 16, 2015, it will convert it to a 1% general salary increase applicable to all employees covered by the SEIU agreement. The proposed amendment will also return the educational incentive to a regular cash payment to be included in employees' take-home pay. It will also return overtime rules under which selected pay time off will count for contractual overtime to be paid at a discounted rate excluding the retirement offsets associated with the 50-50 cost-sharing arrangement with respect to the retirement contributions. And it will also reduce the accrual rate for compensatory time off on an hour-to-hour basis with a halftime premium to be paid in cash at the time that they work overtime. These amendments, again, were entered into with SEIU. This time, I'd like to thank Pam Fair from SEIU for her work. We were able to do this in quite lightning speed, we were able to do this in about a two-week timeframe, we met with entire bargaining team, we were able to communicate, partner together, communicate with their members, our employees, and get it ratified within a one-week timeframe and have it before your board here today. So I would like to thank Pam Fair, Rachel Flores, and their bargaining team for their diligent work on this. And with that, I would like to open, make myself available for any questions you may have.
This is a public hearing, so I'll be opening a public hearing, I would like to make one quick comment and then I'll jump over to Supervisor Zergos and that is that I hope that SEIU knows that we appreciated the fact that they were willing to settle early and that we wanted to, in good faith, not penalize SEIU for settling early and that I hope that this actually helps reinforce sort of a new era of labor negotiations that are marked by an element of trust. And that's really what this, what this, I hope, I hopefully, hopefully this was a good trust-building step for the county to take and go back and do that. We appreciated the trust SEIU gave when they settled early and we certainly tried to reciprocate with that trust by taking this action. Supervisor Zergos?
And thank you, Mr. Chair, I want to add that, to that, to thank, you know, our staff and SEIU, you know, on this MOA and working with us, you know, on very difficult negotiations and sharing on the 50-50 and helping us out, so I want to thank SEIU for working with us. Thank you so much and staff, you know, for the excellent work they've done under Mr. Powers. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? We're ready for.
Let's make a motion.
We had a motion and a second, we're ready for a vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
All right, and we are now at items, we did sixty-six, we're at item sixty-seven. Man, seventy-four items, we're going to need a two-week break after this hearing, I'll tell you that.
Ah, there's my item. Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Russell Sonny settles, County Purchasing Agent. Pursuant to government code section 25502.5, the purchasing agent is authorized to contract for services on behalf of the county as long as the aggregate cost does not exceed $100,000. Item sixty-seven seeks your board's approval for those vendor services that are expected to exceed the $100,000 threshold during the new fiscal year. The amounts shown in the board letter are our best estimates based on department input and historical data. Approving these amounts does not generate an actual expenditure, it only establishes authorized not to exceed amounts that our office, my office, will track. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, we have any questions on this item? It's an important item for us in terms of oversight, we want to make sure we're thought through this carefully. All righty, thank you very much, we're ready for a motion. It's been moved and seconded, we're ready for a vote. And that motion carries. Thank you very much, item sixty-eight, we have sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, that's the whole Correspondence's agenda. So Correspondence Calendar, we need a motion? We need a screen to let us make a motion? There we go. All righty, we have a motion and a second and we're ready to vote. And now we're at item seventy-one, Supervisors Parks and Foy.
Thank you, this is an item for our Board of Supervisors, all of us, to support a grant application that the Ranch of Simi Wakan Park District is doing to purchase 734 acres of Alamos Canyon, which is that area around the Waste Management's landfill. So that would be just wonderful if they can acquire that. I know the Nature Conservancy has been working probably for a decade on this one and so we'd like to see it come to fruition. It's a great partnership between many agencies trying to purchase this land and hopefully with that we will have a protection of habitat and some wetlands and it even incorporates an undercrossing under the 118 freeway on both sides, so it will allow for some connectivity for wildlife corridors, so request that. We also signed this letter today if we can get that to you in time.
And this is part of Waste Management's onboard and it's all part of that whole thing, as we all remember, did as the landfill expansion, so it's good.
Very good.
And hopefully they will get the funds.
So there's been a motion and a second, we're ready to vote. And now the Cerner program, item seventy-two, first half of the Cerner program.
Do you know if I have that letter available? I know it was in the packet.
Agreements.
Good afternoon, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Powers. Thanks for having me, this is my first presentation to the board for an actual board letter, so I also want to thank the CEO's office and other executives in the healthcare agency, hopefully they prepared me well for this.
We'll call you into the back room for evaluation afterwards.
Thank you. So back on March 18th, I originally briefed the board on the Cerner project status and at that time we talked about difficulties we had had with the system as installed and I'm not going to recount all of that in detail here, it's part of the record. However, we did mention at the time that we would be back to discuss the option of having Cerner host our system rather than us hosting ourselves and that's why I'm here today to discuss that. So hopefully, so I wanted to just recap a couple of, or the most important part about the presentation before and that's that the Cerner is a very complex system, fifty-six solutions spanning the entire, the entire hospital, ambulatory care, behavioral health and public health and also to some degree the healthcare plan are all involved in the Cerner program. And it has six racks of servers over in our data center and while our intentions were good at the time, we found that due to the complexity of the system, it required a great deal more capacity of skill and capabilities than we had lined ourselves up for. We did some research, we found out that based upon our contacts, we talked to all the time within the Cerner community, 70% of those entities are using remote hosting facilities at Cerner, 20% started hosting it themselves like ourselves and then transferred the responsibility over to Cerner and that left 10% trying to manage the system themselves. And all of those entities are much larger and have considerably more experience than we do in supporting a system of this magnitude. So the benefits of remote hosting, as indicated up here on the slide, it's lower and more predictable cost. So rather than us budgeting each year for what we predict the cost will be, and I have a chart after that that shows the predictability, this will give us more predictable costs over the lifetime of this contract and it turns out that it's going to be less expensive for us if you measure it out over this timeframe. The system is going to be, stability should be improved almost immediately. Part one aspect of this contract is that we immediately turn over the system's support to the most hosting experts at Cerner and they'll support the system for us from Cerner as the system is built and we get ready for the migration. They provide 24/7 monitoring and support, which we don't have built into our system right now, so we're relying on our tech staff to be called at all hours of the night and come in and dealing with issues. It's definitely more scalable back in Kansas City than it is here. If they need additional equipment to support our system, they've got it on the rack already burnt in and we can take advantage of it right away. One of the big issues we've had with our implementations, we've been very focused on maintaining the system performance and dealing with critical issues with regard to, you know, whether the system is running slow or whether it's not running slow, dealing with kind of the growth issues you have with any large system. By turning this over to Cerner allows us to focus on more meaningful issues like workflow issues, improved patient care, some of which that we've spent some time on, but I don't believe we spent as much time on that as we could, this will help us get there. Protection from the technology change, technology changes, as technology continues to evolve, Cerner bears the burden of keeping up on that, not so much the healthcare agency. They're also going to provide, provide their own independent communication links to the county. So IT services just recently increased the size of our communication link, you probably were aware of that, a much better performance in terms of getting to the internet. We're not going to rely on that pipe to get to Cerner, Cerner will install two redundant pipes just for us so that they can meet their uptime requirements. And last but not least, the data center has offsite backup, there's a picture of their data center right there out in Kansas City, so that if anything were to happen in that building, they have another facility that they'd be able to continue on and support So this is a cost comparison, I had to get, try to get ten years on here and I apologize, it's a little difficult to read. The important thing to note there is that the blue line represents the cost stream if we do it ourselves. And you'll see that it goes up and down, it has spikes, those large spikes represent replacement of our servers and our other equipment, that typically happens on a two-to-four year cycle depending upon who you want to look at as an expert. The green line represents the Cerner line. And so you'll see that after the initial expense in year one, it pretty much flatlines across through year ten. So I just want to, in the board, we mentioned that this is a $19 million contract, total cost of ownership for the entire ten years.
You look at that line and it makes it an easy decision, doesn't it?
Right, so maybe I should just stop right here. It's a ten-year contract with a renewal option, if we choose to renew, we'll be back to the board to present that to you. It includes an increase in our overall number of users that we support, we're currently running at about 1150, you recall that was an issue from before, also mentioned the grand jury recommendations, in this, the contract includes 1,350 users, so we've got plenty of room there to grow. We also were able to negotiate with Cerner $6 million savings off the total cost of ownership as part of this process. It's a nine-month project and that basically covers from the time we start, which we're shooting for July 1st, to have them order the equipment, install it, burn it in, load their solutions on it, they have to validate the communication link and then we have to migrate the entire system back to Kansas City, so they're projecting that at nine months.
A question I have for you, we consistently with these big technology contracts, particularly like we get ten years out and then it's time for us to renew and they really have us by the throat at that point in time. And we have to pay sort of whatever they're asking or, you know, you know, completely, you know, take it over ourselves and, you know, that kind of stuff. What kind of assurances do we have after ten years that we're going to get a reasonable rate when we go to renew? Do we have anything in the contract?
Yes, the contract includes two 36-month renewal periods that we can take advantage of and each renewal period starts at whatever the rate is at the time that we choose to renew. So we actually have price protection for an additional six years at our option.
Wow, not bad.
Mr. Chair, on the benefits, you say that it's a 24/7 monitoring?
Mm-hmm.
Are they life texts that you're going to be, if you want to call somebody in the middle of the night or?
Yes. They actually have that now that we take advantage of. If we get called in the middle of the night and it's something we can't support, we can call their immediate response center and their staff 24/7 at various levels of expertise.
Fantastic, yeah. So if you look at this system now, when you pull this together, do we have an idea of what the overall cost of the system is yet combined? Do you know?
For the entire cost of the entire Cerner project?
Yeah, now this, because I think we started out with 45 or 50 million, are we still within that or is this part of what we're thinking before?
Well, I think in the original, the original cost of the Cerner project, we're including all the costs being allocated to Cerner, some of the costs allocated to us, I can't speak directly, I'll have to ask Nars if she would, can speak to this, if the recurring cost of our own support of the system was included.
Oh, okay.
If it was, then the cost really should be less because over the 10-year period, this would be less than what we would have paid our.
If we did it in-house ourselves.
Right, correct.
Yeah, just to echo that, I think it's on page two or three of the board letter, you can see the original plan for internal hosting would have been about 24.5 million over 10 years versus 19 million. So this is actually a little.
So what we originally proposed a few years back, we're finding a way to save by doing this and.
Right.
And it's going to be good for us, there's no question about it.
No question about it.
And you want to talk about an impact, there's a man that's made a huge impact on this whole system right here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Very true Supervisor.
All right, other questions? Thank you, these are big-time contracts that we're getting into and.
Big savings too.
Trusted staff is really checking them out very carefully and I really appreciate getting those two, six-year, I mean, two, three-year, three, six-month price protection guarantees on us for going on, so great, great work there.
And to your point, Chair, a lot of due diligence went into this, so Terry Theobald was the point and also Mike Pettit was very involved in the negotiation as well as Gartner, which is a nationally-known IT consulting group too, so gave us a lot of good feedback, so good, good due diligence by fiscal as well.
Thank you very much and you don't have to go to the back room, great presentation.
So I'm not sure if you want me to remain here for the next board agenda item, which will be our lighthouse contract?
No, we just did seventy-two, so you're talking about seventy-three?
Yes.
Yes, right, all right, go ahead and make the presentation.
Okay, so I don't have a presentation for seventy-three, it's pretty much spelled on the board letter, I tried to tell the story. When we first went, so before Cerner, we used. When we first went, so before Cerner, we used to do a lot of this manually. We abstracted the data out of our then Meditech system, and then we would send this data to a third-party package called Truven, which would then collect the data and send it off to CMS and the Joint Commission for regulatory reporting requirements. We do 15 core measures, and it, my best estimate is that we were spending a significant amount, over 30 staff people every quarter, were going out and doing this abstracting data to give it to the CMS and the Joint Commission. Cerner also provides a capability to do this that's almost entirely automated. So rather than have nursing staff go out and collect the data and basically manually extrapolating it and massaging it and getting over for the quality measures, the Cerner system can automatically pull that out. We didn't opt for that originally because we were already doing core measure reporting, and we thought we could do it in a similar manner with Cerner. Well, having now gone through a couple of cycles of that and remembering the effort going into it, we looked at Cerner again to see what their option was, and they provide a product called Lighthouse, which we're already licensed for, that we use for meaningful use reporting, something we've been very successful on. They will provide at an additional fee the cost of additional 15 core measures to that program. And what's nice about this solution is that there is really no human interaction required then. What happens is the system automatically extracts the data as part of our regular coding. It packages that up, it sends it to a clearinghouse, it automatically feeds it to the core measures and, I mean, to the CMS and the Joint Commission. The original contract amount that Cerner wanted for this additional features, because it's pretty complex technology, was $1.4 million. We were able to initially negotiate them down $464,000, so under $1 million in discounts. And then at the, basically last week, we sat down with them again and wanted to find out if they would be interested in having Lighthouse come on the same board agenda with remote hosting since it's the end of the quarter, and they were willing to give us another $605,000 in savings on Lighthouse. They took it against the RHO contract, but it was because we put Lighthouse on the agenda. So the actual savings to Lighthouse was over $1 million in savings off the original quoted price.
So we started at 1.4?
Yes.
You knocked it down to 400,000?
Yeah, effectively.
Effectively.
460,000 of that was reflected on this contract, and 600,000 was taken off of the remote hosting contract.
But not a bad day's work. Nice job. Very nice.
That's all I have. Any questions?
All right. Any other questions?
Just, I think we should bring him up more often.
Thank you. Nice work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good work.
It's huge. You know, and I...
That'll save us.
All right, and we have 74. The Oshpad PO...
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Bennett, members of the board. Good afternoon, Mr. Powers. Narcissus again from the healthcare agency, and here to present to your board one of our vendor, Steve Clark, and associates. This vendor is a partner for us, and what they do is prepare our cost report, annual cost report, Oshpad reporting, and our FQHC cost reports.
All right.
Do you have any questions?
All right, we're ready for a motion and a second. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And, well, hopefully Leroy will have a nicer Fourth of July with his reappointment, and we have, we're going to miss the next two weeks in terms of meetings, so I hope everybody has a very good Fourth of July.
Mr. Chair, settling for items?
That's right.
Mr. Chair, can I, I'd like to ask one, Claire. Did we handle item 36, the Living Wage Ordinance?
Well, we didn't do board comments.
Oh, that's right. 36, all right. Yeah, we did do, we did do 36. Supervisor Foy voted against it, and it was four to one.
It's an adjourned memory of the folks here.
Board comments, right. Glad we didn't have Jeff wait until now.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to adjourn in memory of the folks here.
Thank you, all right.
I, too, have an adjourned memory, and I just have one shout-out to our Barry Fisher, who is recognized as champion healthcare, champion CEO, and our legacy champion, Dr. Sam Edwards, and also to, and this was at Pacific Coast Business Times luncheon, and also to the annual dinner of V-COG. I did attend that, and Todd McLeary did a great job in talking about the economic value and many other values of having our airport, our airport authorities, and it was a good luncheon.
Should we start V-COG?
No, I shouldn't.
Supervisor Parks?
I would ask that we adjourn in memory of the people on this list. I also wanted to pass out to you a great article by Bram Circo, Circo, excuse me, who is with our watershed protection district, and it was an article that was in the Thousand Oaks Acorn, I'm sure the other Acorns, but just gives a really good public information, well-written article about our watershed and the water quality and what we can do about it. So it was nice to see that information out there for the public. Good job there. Also attended the Turning Point Champions Fund of Mental Health, and that was nice to see. I know several others of us were there, too, and also the Red, White, and Blue Ball, which recognized, among others, Therese Hughes, who came before us before talking about her project putting together documentation on women veterans from World War II and other conflicts. And she got an award, as did Robin Hutton, who's been focusing her attention on promoting Sergeant Reckless, the first, as according to Therese Hughes, the first woman veteran because she, Sergeant Reckless was a mayor, a warhorse carrying ammunition during the Korean War, and that was kind of a nice story. They're building a whole replica or statue to him in DC. And Therese Hughes has also heard, her documentation on women veterans will be presented in Washington, DC. And then also attended a Santa Monica Mountains tribute to Supervisor Zeb Yarszowski, who after 20 years is retiring because of term limits, but he has saved at least 20,000 acres in our Santa Monica Mountains, and I know he'll be very much missed, but he has also been instrumental in setting the bar for a lot of others, including their LA County campaign finance ordinance, and then recently the local coastal plan, which hopefully we'll be able to duplicate, because I think that was one of his crowning achievements in protecting the mountains from grading. So that was nice to be able to attend that and recognize him.
All right. Supervisor Foy. All right. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and I hope everybody has a great Fourth of July, all right? Take care of your families, all right? Meeting is adjourned.
All right.